Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Placerville City Council for April 23rd. I'd like to invite everybody to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And before we begin this evening's meeting, I'm going to ask the city manager to announce and introduce the newest member of our city management team, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to introduce Terry Zeller as our new Director of Community Services. Welcome, Terry. Terry comes to us from the city of Chico, or actually the Chico Area Recreation District. Did you get that right? Card, I have to remember, Card. Where he's been since 2016. Prior to that, he was in, I'll try to pronounce this, Michawaka?
Michawaka.
Michawaka, Indiana.
That place.
From 2011 to 2016, as Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. Prior to that, he was in Reno as a park development planner for about 10 years. Terry has actually moved from Chico to Folsom, so he got a little bit closer. As you know, housing is difficult right now, and so that's where he was able to get to and find something that worked for him. Lives in Folsom with his wife Carol. He has one son and one daughter, both grown and out of the home. So, we're excited to have Terry here with us and looking forward to big things with him and moving forward with our Parks and Recreation program. So, welcome, Terry.
Oh, Terry.
Thank you very much, Cleve. Welcome, Terry. And also, I would like to thank Matt Lishman, who gets to get Tuesday nights off now. He has filled in for the last few months running both Park and Rec and did a fine job, so we appreciate his efforts in the interim until we found our replacement for Mr. Yu. So, welcome aboard, sir. We'll move on to roll call now. I'd ask clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Moving on to announcements and presentations to the public. Item 3.1, Brief Comments by City Council Members. Vice Mayor Saragosa, do you have any comments this evening?
Attended the Moore event along with the mayor and Councilmember Borelli and Mr. Rivas, and had a great time. Again, it's always great to see the community come out, raise a lot of good money for a great organization. That's it.
Thank you. Dennis Thomas.
I'm going to embarrass myself because I can't remember the name of the program that's going on this weekend, but I know that it's really important to talk about it. It's the Day of...
Day of Service, Rise and Shine.
Thank you. Day of Service, Rise and Shine. Now, we'll be out there, and you still have an opportunity to get on the website and sign up to maybe help out in our community in someplace or another by helping fix up parks, cemeteries, various areas around the town that need a little sprucing up. There's going to be more than four, around 400 to 500 people, from what I understand, if not more.
They've expanded it past, past, their surrounding territory.
Okay, so it's quite an event. You can go, Day of Shine, you can look it up on the Internet. They have, you can sign up with particular events online or particular areas that you want to participate in and helping out. So, there's a lot there to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Councilmember Borelli, do you have any...
Yes, I was busy. I really went to some great events. Number one, we're still, we're getting ready for Amgen, and then we went, I went to the community, the EOC, which a lot of us, we all went to the fire safe training. And I went to Fire Safe Council, and I went to the Moore Career, the, what Councilmember Saragosa just talked about. I also participated in Girls Night Out, and I went to the podcast that our Chief of Police and Sheriff were narrators on a panel, and that was really interesting, and I'll let the chief tell you about that. And I went to the Sir Optimus Awards Night and witnessed some fine members of our young people, get some great awards, and another Fire Safe Council meeting where we had a great program, and I want to thank them for all the work that they're doing, too. So, and that was it.
Thank you, Patty. Councilmember Taylor, good evening.
Last couple of weeks, I went to the EOS Training, the Emergency Operations Training, with all my colleagues here. I really enjoyed the fishing derby with my family, and my daughter won a fishing pole in the raffle, which was really fun. And then, that same day, I went to the Friends of Seniors spaghetti dinner, which was raising money for defensible space for seniors. I finished reviewing the proposals for the new City Hall, and I'm looking forward to that committee meeting. And I will be painting bleachers this Saturday for the Rise and Shine Day of Service, so looking forward to it. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. I think I went to some of the same events, so I won't, I will spare us additional comment on that. And I would like to, I would like to take a moment, though, to note that Moore Workshop, you know, they have chosen to reinvest in our community. They've been an amazing service for a small community. The services that they are able to provide and have provided for decades now for a challenging population that deserves to be served and deserves to be enriched as much as possible, and the contributions that they can then give back to our community, thanks to the hard work that Moore provides and the services that they provide, has always been a very unique thing about El Dorado County. It's a very unusual and very progressive, successful program. And for Susie Davies and the Moore Board of Directors and all those folks involved with them to decide to take one of the most challenging buildings on Placerville Drive, and they are in the process of demolition now, they're probably as close to getting their building permits to totally rehab the old bowling alley, as some folks know it, or the Moore Workshop Building. So, just on behalf of the council, and I appreciate them staying in Placerville. I'm sure life might have been easier if they could have moved to just some brand-new place that was already, but they've decided to stay here, and we will be, continue to be, you know, a part of their success story in our community. So, thank you to Susie, and thank you to the council members and staff that were present at their latest fundraiser. Of course, there's always a little bit more money that needs to be raised to redo an old building or a new building, so anyone that wishes to contribute, I'm sure the contributions are more than welcome. Councilmember Borelli?
I was just going to add that. They still need money.
Always, always a few dollars more.
We would love to have them.
So, we look forward to watching the next months and their journey as they turn the old building into something new and exciting that'll continue to serve for decades in the future. So, all right, moving on to comments, excuse me, item 3.2, a Caltrans update regarding the Highway 50 mosquito road. Well, we see that you all, that we do have folks in the audience, so that does prove that traffic is flowing out there. City Manager Morris was kind enough to check with the project managers at Caltrans this morning, and they are on time and on target. Budget is none of our business, but we want them on time, and they are doing that. They promised to be off the highway, lanes restored to service on Friday evening?
Actually, by Saturday morning.
By Saturday morning.
So, through Friday night, they may still be working, cleaning up, et cetera, but by Saturday morning, lanes and off-ramps should be open, so.
Well, we've made all the TV programs.
I have to say, most of the ones that I have seen have been positive, showed good pictures of the town. They didn't overdramatize what was going on. The videos that I saw, the traffic was making its way through nicely, through the one lane in each direction, so a little thanks goes to the Caltrans Public Relations Team.
I don't think it was Highway 50. I think it's Main Street.
Don't tell them that. Bottom line is, we're just a few days away from surviving that project.
And it'll be beautiful.
And it was very necessary, and working as a team with Caltrans, you know, as a city and a community, we were able to, we were hopefully able to get this done with very minimal impact to the community. I really honestly did envision, especially this past weekend, lines of cars in just strange places, like Apple Hill on steroids, and it never happened. So, thank you to the Caltrans team that worked on it.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could I just...
Certainly.
Councilmember Taylor brought this up. I probably should have mentioned, Historic City Hall presentations will be on, we have two, the submitted proposals. Those will be on May 6th at 2:00 here in Town Hall. Our committee will be hearing those presentations and asking questions, so just for the you and the public's information, those presentations will take place that day.
And could you repeat that one more time, Cleve? The first one is on...
Both is same day, May 6th at 2:00. We'll start with one, one from 2:00 to 3:00, and the second from 3:00 to 4:00 approximately.
Two presentations.
All right, thank you. And those are open to the public. Any member of the public can attend and observe that committee in action.
Correct. And we are going to open up an opportunity for questions from, and comments from the public, too.
All right. I appreciate Karen taking that on for us. Very important. All right, brings us on. Is anything else on Highway 50 that I might have overlooked?
No, I think that's, I think that's complete. We have a minor issue that we're dealing with, with our city engineer, and that is that they are staging all their equipment, the mosquito parking ride that we use the next day for our Rise and Shine cleanup, but we are working on that, and I think it won't be an issue. We're dealing with it, so.
I'll tell them we'll trade, get in the ramps swept clean and all that stuff cleaned up, and they can use our lot. I have confidence in our staff that will handle it in the most excellent manner. All right, moving on to 3.3, Olafco Presentation. We have this evening, in our audience and approaching our podium, the Executive Director of El Dorado County Olafco, and I would like to introduce him this evening, and welcome Jose to the Placerville City Council. And I understand that you are going to give us a presentation on Olafco 101.
Actually, no.
Oh, good.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to take up too much of your time. This is intended to be a brief introduction. I'm here at the request of the mayor, so good evening, members of the city council. My name's Jose Enriquez. I'm the executive officer for El Dorado Olafco. I want to thank your staff for accommodating me in your agenda. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, because I know that you've got a few items here on tonight's agenda, but just wanted to put a name to a face. You might have heard of the agency called Olafco. If the Sacramento Bee were here, they always follow that up with the obscure but powerful agency. We're not that powerful, really. We are obscure, but what Olafco is, very briefly, is the agency that regulates the boundaries of local governments, including the city of Placerville. And I know that annexations are, have been a topic of discussion in the past. I would love to return to give a more presentation of Olafco 101, but today it was just intended to be a brief introduction. I know I've had an opportunity to meet at least once with all city council members, with the exception of the vice mayor, but we can schedule that soon. But again, this is just intended to be very brief. I don't know if you have any questions, but that was it.
Well, thank you, Jose. Is there a member of the council that has a question regarding the... I'll take you up on that, on the meeting. That'd be great.
Definitely.
Appreciate it.
Definitely.
All right, well, we do, Karen, anybody else? All right, well, we do look forward to annexation and 101.
Thank you.
Had a future meeting.
I would like to also just commend your staff as well. We've been working very closely with your staff over the years, especially Director Rivas, and we have a very good working relationship, and I commend you for having such excellent staff.
Well, thank you, Jose. We appreciate it. We appreciate you coming this evening.
Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing you again.
After budget, how's that? We'll be worn out after that. They'll be easy.
All right, moving on to item four, Closed Session Report. Mr. Driscoll, do we have anything to report this evening?
We do not, sir. The council did not take any reportable action in closed session tonight.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item five, Adoption of the Agenda. We've had a request to move item 12.4 up to be heard before the other items under, well, under discussion in action items. With that change, would there be a motion for adoption?
I'll move.
Second.
Been moved to second at all, in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. The agenda is adopted with the change in item 12.4. Moving on to item 6.1, Ceremonial Matters. Good evening, Chief. I have the pleasure this evening of reading a proclamation for National Peace Officers' Week, which will be May 12th through the 18th. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have adopted Public Law 8754, designating May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day in recognition of law enforcement officers nationwide who have sacrificed their lives or been disabled in the performance of their duties. And whereas Public Law 8754 also designates the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week in recognition of the service provided by thousands of federal, state, and local law enforcement officers. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of these dedicated, of those who dedicate their lives to law enforcement profession and to keeping our communities safe. And whereas Placerville police officers and officers throughout the state and nation risk their lives on a daily basis to maintain peace within the community and protect the lives and property of our citizens. And whereas the members of the Placerville Police Department provide a vital public service safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of this city. Now, therefore, I mark a Acuna, Mayor of the City of Placerville, to hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through May 18th, 2019, as National Police Week in the City of Placerville, and further proclaim that May 15th, 2019, shall be Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Placerville, and the United States' flag shall be flown at half-staff at all city offices on this date. And Chief, I'd be honored to present a certificate of acknowledgement to you.
The photographer's on the end.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Park.
The city engineer.
She did this a couple of weeks ago.
I think she did.
Rip train.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Right now, our Assistant City Manager Warren is going to pass out the pins that we will wear during the two-week period preceding Peace Officers Memorial Day. So, we started a tradition last year of getting every city director and every member of the council a pin, and this year's pin has the year, and what that is, is a model of the Peace Officers Memorial that sits down at the corner of 10th and Capitol Mall in Sacramento. I would encourage everybody, if they haven't had a chance, especially members of the public, to visit the California Peace Officers Memorial, where the name of every officer lost in the line of duty is inscribed, "Every Officer Lost in California." This memorial ensures that the citizens of California never forget the brave men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice while serving their local communities here in California. In 2018, sadly, there were eight officers lost in the line of duty, and their names will be added to the California Peace Officers Memorial at an enrollment ceremony on Monday, May 6th. Commander Wren and Commander Nida and I will attend that ceremony and represent the City of Placerville, and we honor the memory of these officers every day. Thank you very much for the proclamation, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate it.
It's certainly our honor, Chief, and we certainly thank you and all the members of our department and all the departments that serve and protect for their service and their commitment to their communities. Any other council member comments on this item?
Just, I would say, if anyone's ever had a chance to go down to Sacramento for the actual event, it's, it is a solemn event. I mean, it, Governor always, traditionally always comes and speaks as well. Police officers from around the state that come up for it. If anyone has a chance to go and do it one, at least one time, I would encourage folks to go and attend it as a, as a guest.
And I'm going to say, just, you don't even have to go to that. Just go visit that memorial.
That's true. That is true.
Well, thank you, Chief, and we will wear these proudly. Thank you for distributing them to us.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I'll just touch on what Councilmember Borelli talked about, too. There was a podcast that the sheriff and I were invited to talk on last week. It was sponsored by Bay State Church of Placerville. We were asked several weeks ago to do it, and it wasn't a debate, it was more of a discussion on just the hot topics of the day. It was the first time I've ever done a podcast. I've done media interviews, but this is really different. It was enjoyable. Sheriff and I had a good time. Pastor Al Soto did a good job moderating the discussion. If you want to listen to it, it's on our Facebook page. You can click the link. It's on the Sierra, also the Sierra Law Enforcement Chaplaincy's webpage as well. Just click the link, and it'll take you to the site, and you can listen to it. It's about a little over an hour long, and you can watch it, too, if you want, but if you, if you listen to it, you'll get the point, so.
But real quick, the purpose was to bring the community?
Yes, the purpose is to bring the community together. We talked about topics, including the image of law enforcement in today's society and what we're faced with every day, and not in a bad way, just what today's reality is, as well as some of the mental health crisis issues that are facing the state of California, not just El Dorado County. Sheriff and I talked about what it takes to be a peace officer in today's society, why we're having a little bit of a tough time recruiting candidates. So, it's just an interesting discussion, and he throws out some good statistics and some questions, some hard questions for the sheriff and I. Wasn't a, was by no means a pass, which is good. Sheriff DiAgostini and I enjoy those types of discussions. So, they're going to do more of those. I don't think we'll be on, like, every one of them, but we obviously offered to come back anytime they wanted to talk to us, so.
Well, you both did a great job.
I appreciate that.
Well, you get a pass from Councilmember Borelli, so that's a good sign. And importantly, you know, it's a point I've made a number of times in the past few months, is our police department really does serve as, as our mental health, an arm of a mental health service. Our officers, you know, a lot of it through your leadership and our leadership of our field commanders and our sergeants have taken it upon themselves to really have the knowledge and the skills to deal with a variety of homeless challenges, transients, drug abuse, addictive personalities, and what, and what have you, a lot of mental health issues. They're out there every shift, and they are in contact with these folks, that, across that entire spectrum. And my hat is off to them and your department for really being at point of contact on a 24-hour basis in this city. And I don't think a lot of communities or police departments could say that, but I think we're very blessed that we have officers that take it upon themselves to learn more and extend their skills and share that without in the community every day of the week. So, thank you. Please thank them for us.
I will do that, Mr. Mayor. Just as a side note, if I'm not mistaken, Cleve, we're going to do a presentation in two weeks on that, right? At the next council meeting?
On the homeless issue?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we'll talk more about what our response has been and where we're going to go forward from there.
Great. Well, thank you, Chief. And congratulations on Police Officer Day. It's very important. I, you know, it's a big hassle to have national lineup, but I really wish we could have that, that community connection with our officers every month. That would be great, but...
Okay.
It's smaller scale, but they need that boost. They need to know that the citizens out there appreciate them. All right, we'll move on to item 7.1, Written Communication. Mr. Morris, did we receive any written communication this afternoon?
There was one item that you received, I believe in relation to item 12.1, that has been handed out to you. That's the only written item we have tonight.
Thank you, sir. Does everybody, I believe, receive that up here on the dais? Have a chance to review that? All right, we'll move on to item 7.2, Oral Communications. This is the point in the meeting where this, anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council on a non-agendized item may do so. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and your subject matter to items that are pertinent to city council business. So, if anyone would like to come forward and please state your name for the benefit of our audience.
My name is Jean Rezebeck, and I'm here about Rotary Park. I know the, the resolution's been adopted and everything, but I want to let the council know a couple of things that has gone on.
Is this on the batting cage?
The 12.4, yeah.
Yeah, well, we are going to hear that item in just a few minutes.
Okay.
So, this is for non-agendized items.
Right, but you've already adopted it, didn't you?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
Nope.
All right.
Public hearing will take place in just a few minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. At this time, I handed a letter to the city clerk, if it would be okay, if she handed that to the mayor and council, if that would be okay?
Yeah, we have them.
Oh, you have them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Honorable Mayor, Council, Staff, Chief. My name is Rick Saregui. I'm the original founding member and CEO of HTP Group, which has been operating a licensed cannabis dispensary in the city of Vallejo since 2013. I'm also the president and CEO of Tranquil Meadows Company, which will be submitting an application to the city of Placerville for a retail cannabis facility. Some of you might remember my name and the name of my company, HTP Group, because I emailed an introduction letter to city council, the mayor, and the city manager, right before you finished finalizing your ordinance. And I invited everybody to take a tour of my dispensary, because I understand that people might not have been in a cannabis dispensary. It's such a new industry. I was actually a little hurt when nobody took me up on my offer, and the offer still stands. But the good news is that the offer got better, because now if you visited Vallejo, if you wanted to see a best-in-practice dispensary, you'd get to visit two of Vallejo's best-in-practice dispensaries, because Tranquil Meadows is a collaboration between HTP Group and Better Health Group, which are two of the best-in-practice dispensaries in the city of Vallejo, which I think is demonstrated by the letter from the mayor of Vallejo that we handed out to Between Better Health Group and HTP Group, we have a combined 15 years' experience in the cannabis retail operations, and we know with our experience we could be an asset to the city of Placerville. We could build a local workforce that will thrive and operate at the highest standards. We will be able to educate the citizens of Placerville on the medical benefits of cannabis and how to use cannabis in a very safe manner, because that's what we've been doing for 15 years in Vallejo. We look forward to having the opportunity to apply for a permit and the application process that you have in place. We believe our combined experience and the unprecedented commitment to helping the community will help us rise to the top. And if I got another 30 seconds, a quick, brief summary of how I ended up here in this industry and here today is, my sister is a cancer survivor over 12 years now, and I watched how medical cannabis helped her use 50% less chemotherapy in her battle with lymphoma, and how it eased her through other medications during her chemotherapy. I personally, in November, was just diagnosed recently with prostate cancer, and I'm taking an alternative route away from surgery and some of the other things, and I'm using cannabis in a treatment now with my doctors to treat that, and we're having some success, but we, we just started that. I've worked at the veterans home in Yountville, California. My best friend, who was a World War II veteran who passed away two years ago, when I met him in 1995, he was addicted to opiates, and this is before I had a dispensary, and I used cannabis brownies to help him get off of the opiates and changed his life, where he lived a great life up until 88 years old. And in the, I've helped dozens and dozens of veterans use cannabis to get off of dangerous and addicting opiates. So, thank you very much for this time, and we look forward to this application process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item?
Hello, Mayor, City Council, and Staff. I apologize if my head's down, I'm reading my little prepared statement here. My name is Nathan Coward. I'm the CFO and Store Manager of Better Health Group in Vallejo, California. We are a licensed cannabis dispensary that has been operating in the city of Vallejo in good standing since 2009. I'm also the CFO and Treasurer of Tranquil Meadows Company, partner to Rick Saregui, who you just heard from. We, again, are a conglomeration of Better Health Group and HTP Group. Excuse me. We are currently applying for one of the cannabis retail sales permits offered by the city of Placerville. We at Better Health Group have been operating a cannabis-based business for over 10 years. We've developed some relationships with our community, as well as our local community leaders and organizations. We've, we have the backing of our local community leaders, as well as city officials, proven by the document you've received by my business partner. We've already come to Placerville and met our neighbors of the proposed location. Actually, met them and shook hands and stuff, and we've received a lot of verbal support from the business owners. We're currently, we're, excuse me, we're currently working with the local international longshore and warehouse union people. We plan on working with them to help create and conduct training courses, which will legitimize job titles of this industry. As Better Health Group has partnered with HTP Group, we are focusing our energies industry. As Better Health Group has partnered with HTP Group, we are focusing our energies on the city of Placerville. We are committed to hiring local, which has already begun in our pursuit of our permit in Placerville, by utilizing local contractors and property owners. We are local leaders of industry in Vallejo, California, and we believe we'd be a great addition to your community. If you have any questions or want to reach out to us, I've provided my business card. And the same offer stands from Mr. Sareggi. If you'd ever like to come down and see an operating cannabis business and how it works, you're more than welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna close public comment for just a minute. I want to get a clarification with my city attorney and my city manager. Public comment is traditionally items that are of concern of our residents, items that are happening in the community, that type of thing. I am a little uncomfortable with two speakers now, six minutes of solicitation and support of a cannabis business. The cannabis industry in this town is just in the permitting process, and I'm curious as to the appropriateness of what I consider basically a sales pitch for one particular business as a part of public comment, as we traditionally see it here.
And liberal interpretation of public comment would probably allow it, but I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I see it as a self-serving statement relating to a process that is going on now that is unique to those individuals that have made application for that. I mean, to the extent that the cannabis ordinance applies citywide, you could argue there's some general community interest, community concern about that. But the comments that you're hearing are particularly, you know, this is why we should get a permit. That process is going on and will be determined through the processes outlined in the ordinance. So, it is a little bit out of place here.
Yeah, I would feel that also would be almost a granting going unfair privilege because other cannabis dealers that, or applicants, I should say, would want the same opportunity, and I wouldn't blame them if we set a precedent. So, if you would concur, Mr. Morris, could you answer for all of us, what is the current status of the cannabis permitting process, and how many applications have we currently received?
Applications are due end of day on April 25th, so two days from now, Thursday. To date, we have received just one application so far. I know there has been a lot of interest. Our planning department has been talking to several people, and there's a lot going on. But to my knowledge, we have not received more than just the one. Is that correct, Mr. Rivas?
That's correct, yes.
All right, and because it is an agendized, I don't want to get into it. Just a very brief update as to what's going on. So, I would, oh, I'm gonna reopen public comment and ask that if there's any member of the public that wants to discuss an item, I will request not to hear from any more folks associated with the last two speakers in this Tranquil Meadow. Recognizing Mr. Smith, good evening.
Yeah, Kirk Smith and members of the council. My name is Kirk Smith, and I'm not a cannabis dispensary. Coming in on Highway 50, and you're just past Ray Lawyer Drive, and off on your right, there's this beautiful landscape. I've always loved it and felt it was very welcoming, especially that area where it says historic Placerville. And I measured it the other day. It's about one mile between Ray Lawyer Drive and almost up to where you get to the welcoming sign. And my question has to do with the idea of whether, how much of that is city property? Because I know that the city came in and cleared out a homeless encampment a couple times. So, is that government property? And again, it was beautiful, welcoming, wonderful to see, except now it looks scary because it looks like paradise before. So, is there, if that is government property, is there a plan for clearing that that the city has? That would be welcome to know about. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Let's see if we can get an answer for you a little later. I think we can. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council on a non-agendized item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I will go ahead and close public comment, and I'll ask city manager if he could briefly answer Kirk's. I think we have pretty good familiarity in there because of the cleanup work we've done.
Well, there is some, there are some homeless camps in the area I think he's referring to. We do have plans to clean that up that we're working on right now, should be hopefully done within the next few weeks. If he's talking about brush clearing, we hope to be able to raise the canopy in that area and do some other work around there also to improve the fire safe situation there. We're still working on that, but hopefully that will be done within the next month or so.
Combination of state, county, and city property? Fair description?
Correct. Correct. I think a lot of that that he's referring to, I don't know the exact location he's referring to, but I think a lot of it is city, some of it is state also, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, moving on now to Item 8, the consent calendar. All items will be considered under one motion unless a member of the council wishes to have one pulled for further discussion and review. Is there any item that a council member wished to have pulled this evening?
I'd like to pull 8.4.
Councilmember Taylor wishes to remove Item 8.4 for further discussion, and that deals with the intent for collection and assessments for our two subdivisions. Is there any other item that a council member wished to further discuss? Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on any of the other items on this evening's consent calendar? Seeing no one approaching, I, let's see, let's go ahead and make a motion. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
I'll move for that.
Second. Been moved by Councilmember Borelli and seconded by Vice Mayor Saragosa. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
All right, that portion of the consent calendar is approved. We'll move on to the item that was pulled from the consent, which was Item 8.4. Which staff member has that? Mr. Warren, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the report, or I can give a general just overview of the item, whichever you would prefer.
Well, a quick question I had for the Orchard Hill assessment was there was no inflator in it, and I was wondering if that's typical or why we would do that.
In Placerville, it is right now.
Okay.
Both of your LMDs do not have inflators, unfortunately, so they're not keeping up with inflation. Your BAD in the ridge at Orchard Hill does have an inflator based on the San Francisco Hayward-San Jose CPI and Caltrans Construction Index, whichever's higher. But that was passed in the mid-2000s when we kind of learned from the experience of the LMD. So, in order to raise or implement an inflator, you would have to go to the property owners to do that. And that's something that, you know, we discussed that in the goal-setting workshop of a project going into next year to look at the Ridge, or excuse me, the Orchard Hill LMD and the cost associated with that district. So, in the staff report, it does mention that it's covering the basic cost. I do want to say it's just basic, the bare minimum. It's not really covering the full born cost. So, I'd be happy to answer any other questions or maybe.
Okay, and then one question I had on the Cottonwood Park subdivision?
Yes.
And I apologize. Normally, I meet with you ahead of time, but with Easter and everything, I didn't get all my questions answered beforehand, so. So, we're only assessing this to Zone 1. What happens when, is that because Zone 2 is unimproved or?
Actually, the only, I believe the only two zones that are left is Phases 4 and 6, and those are not being assessed. Once they're, you know, developed, they would share in the cost of the park and the lighting and the right-of-way that's being serviced in that area. So, there would be a whole new engineers' report that would be generated, and of course, there would be, you know, the assessments determined and so on and so forth.
Okay.
So, Dave, can, when the next phase is open, can you change the assessment agreement then to?
Yes, it would open. My understanding, and John and Pierre, correct me if I'm wrong, and Cleve, is that the entire district would be reevaluated.
Oh, the entire district?
Yes. And so, for example, the cost of the park, it really, it's based on benefit. So, they would do an analysis of how much benefit Phases 4 and 6 each parcel benefits from the park, benefits from certain lighting, open space that would be serviced by the LMD. So, there would be a very in-depth analysis of the overall district in each parcel with the addition of Phases 4 and 6 in the district.
That would be great, and then we wouldn't have to go through the election process.
I want to stress, though, because the existing is set up.
Right.
We could not increase those fees to the existing without a full vote.
That's correct.
However, it will, the new will, that cost will be spread amongst all of them with the new phases also. And so, even though it won't, probably won't be higher than what the existing is, you're getting more money because you're bringing in the additional phases. So, hopefully, it will be a good thing at that time, so.
Karen, I appreciate your pulling. As I know, this is, we are operating at a deficit in Orchard Hill. Is that correct, Dave?
Technically, yes. The report indicates that they're covering their costs, but it is basic cost. There's really nothing being set aside for deferred maintenance and just capital replacement within that park. And really, even the operating cost, it's really bare minimum. You could demonstrate probably at least another $5,000 more in cost.
And there's nothing to address the almost worn-out park equipment in Orchard Hill? Replacement?
Currently, not. There's not a reserve or something to tap into to pay for those costs. Our reserves have been exhausted.
It seems like this would be something that we'll want to address at budget, so that we can get.
I think Dave's got it, honestly.
Get staff some time, official time, so they can maybe do an outreach with all the residents out there. I know they, I'm sure they all appreciate the green space in the park. It comes with a price.
Yeah, yeah. There's, you know, we did get a proposal to do a full evaluation by your consultant NBS, and the cost is actually about 150% of the annual assessment. So, our thought was is to use them on a consultant basis to kind of guide staff to do what they would normally be doing in that process. And it's something I think we can do. It's a relatively small district, so.
Thank you. Karen, did you have any other comments or concerns?
Thank you.
I appreciate your pulling. Is there any other comments or concerns? Would someone like a motion, make a, excuse me, someone like to make a motion to approve Item 8.4?
I'll move to approve it.
Second.
All right, let's see now. Is there money involved? I'll call, ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That item in consent is completed. We'll move on to Item 10. We have an ordinance this evening, Item 10.1. Staff is asking us to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending Title 10, Chapter and Section 12 regarding accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Good evening, Mr. Rivas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Staff is asking the council tonight to consider amendments to the city's accessory dwelling unit regulations that are under Section 10-4-12 of the city code. And basically, these changes will bring our code into compliance with recent legislative changes to the state code regarding accessory dwelling unit law. The city's last revision to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance was back in October of 2017. Also, at that time, was to bring the code into compliance with changes that were made at state law. And just a little caveat to that, we do expect probably in the near future, additional changes to the ADUs. Basically, it's part of the state's goal of increasing the ability of providing houses. So, ADUs are thought of as a more affordable housing unit than, say, the main building. Since, also in 2017, then-Governor Jerry Brown signed additional ADU legislation into law, which attempts to clarify state ADU law, and that was Senate Bill 229 and Assembly Bill AB 494, and these updates went into effect January 1st of 2018. These are minor amendments to the Placerville code that has been summarized in your staff report, and I'll just quickly go over what some of those changes are. These changes will allow for the creation of an ADU at the time a single-family dwelling unit is proposed. Currently, the city regulation requires that the existing of the main single-family dwelling unit or primary unit on the parcel be permitted, but this will allow any parcel that's zoned for single-family or multifamily uses before the ADU may be developed. Two, clarify maximum floor space provisions for the attached ADU. Current city regulation is a little bit confusing. We would specify an exception that the increased floor area should not be less than 600 square feet or more than 1,200 square feet. And the amendment would basically copy the state language in terms of floor space, replacing the term floor area. It also clarifies that the city may not impose parking for an ADU if it's part of a proposed or existing primary residence. And this amendment would add this new parking exemption. It will also broaden the definition of tandem parking, which means two or more automobiles that are parked on a driveway or in a location on the lot lined up behind one another. And this amendment will not cause any substantive change to the Placerville City Code, but will provide more clarity. In addition, state law will allow cities and counties the ability to require that the property owner live on the property or that the property is used for rentals of terms longer than 30 days. The current city ADU regulations do not stipulate restrictions on short-term rental of an ADU to less than 30 days, but does require an owner occupant on the property. So, this amendment would restrict tenancy to ADUs for a rental term of more than 30 days to ensure that the city is creating housing as opposed to lodging facilities. Currently, no additional setbacks are required for an applicant that converts a garage or accessory structure into an ADU. So, under the new legislation, the state makes it clear that the city may not impose additional setbacks, even if a portion of the existing garage is converted to an accessory structure. So, again, that's another limitation then that the city can impose on a conversion. So, with that, staff is recommending that the council introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending Title 10, which is a zoning code, Chapter 4, which is general regulations, Section 12, accessory dwelling units, bringing the city code into compliance with state law as shown in your attachment 1. That concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pierre. I certainly appreciate your hard work on bringing this into compliance with the new state regulations. It's all part of finding affordable housing, and I appreciate the effort to prevent these units from becoming vacation rentals and that sort of thing. That's not the purpose of this, so. Are there any, excuse me, are there any council member questions for Pierre before I open the public comment? Yes, please.
Yes. I think I've expressed this before, but the one that I, I just can't see how, it's talking about no additional parking. And I, we have such a horrible parking problem here now. All you have to do is go up and down some of our streets and see the people out in the middle of the street, and I just, I can't understand why, you know, why they're wanting to eliminate that. For instance, it, so what I wanted, I guess what I wanted to ask you is if, if something like this, if there was an application, and you could see that there's absolutely no room for another car on that piece of property, and it would be, and there's no place, say, in the surrounding area, are you, absolutely your hands are tied that you can deny that?
We are usurped per the state regulations, so I'm gonna try and find the applicable section. So, if you look on your attachment 1 under ordinance, turn to the second page, moving down to Item 10, Parking. Basically, the code will read Parking. One off-street parking space is required except as provided in Section 11. And so, 11 below says Parking Exceptions. The off-street parking requirements does not apply to the following ADUs. And you see A through F, and ADUs located within a half-mile of public transit as determined by the director. B, ADUs located within an architecturally or historically significant historic district. C, existing ADUs that were permitted without additional parking. D, when on-street parking permits are required but not offered to the occupant of the ADU. E, when a car-share vehicle is located within one block of an accessory dwelling unit as determined by the director. And then F, this was, this is the only section that's been added as part of this code revision, is F, the ADU is part of, attached to or within the proposed or existing primary residence. And we, and that is, again, that was required by the state, so we're usurped from making anything more restrictive, so. And that's why at the beginning of my staff report, I wanted to give you the caveat that staff expects it will be before you with additional changes to the ADU regulations and probably other changes to housing in general because of the state's goal of creating more housing within the state.
Yeah, I'll just add, there's SB 13 by Senator Wykowski, which is also another bill on ADUs, which would prohibit local jurisdictions from imposing impact fees on ADUs less than 750 square feet, and then limit the charge above 750 square feet to 25% of the fees otherwise charged on a new single-family dwelling. It would also continue to prohibit otherwise charged on a new single-family dwelling. It would also continue to prohibit replacement parking for garage, carport, cover parking structures, and prohibit owner occupancy requirements as well. So the bill's passed out of First Committee. It's in Senate Appropriations now. It's generally where bills go to die. But because of the push on new housing, as Director Rivas has brought up, I think all of these bills are in play for a while. I would anticipate this bill moving over to the Assembly in addition to like SB 50, the big housing bill that's out there. And so I think Pierre is probably right. We'll continue to see more movement on this issue. And the goal here, I mean, they're not, when they're talking about this in Sacramento, they're really not thinking about cities like ours. They're thinking about San Diego and building high-rises next to transit corridors and transit centers where you can push people into public transportation and not have the vehicle requirements. And so.
We always seem to suffer the consequences of all these bills.
Correct.
It's just, it's maddening, so.
Good questions. Any other questions for staff before I open the public hearing? Pierre, I had one quick one. I assume that this would be an administrative-only process for an ADU. There would be no planning commission hearing involved.
The only situation that comes to mind where we would take an application to the planning commission would be if the ADU is proposed within an historic district, and then we would require a site plan review for that. But outside, no, it'd be purely administrative. They'd pull their building permit to construct in accordance with the codes.
Okay. And again, that's something as outlined by state regulation?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item, 10.1. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council on the proposed changes to the accessory dwelling unit regulations?
Good evening.
Good evening, councilmember and mayor, and everybody up there. I'm Sue Rodman. I'm resident of Plasterville, and I'm here to talk about accessory dwelling units as the tiny house movement, or the small house movement, is an architectural and social movement that advocates simple living in small homes. And usually, these are residential structures under 400 square feet. So our limit of it has to be at least 600 square feet is a problem for these. Tiny houses are functionally focused and typically take less than 500 square feet. They can be built. They can also be purchased. Cities have become more open to tiny houses, particularly when used as accessory dwelling units. This is when a tiny house is added to a property where there's already a conventional house, and the tiny house can serve as a home for an aging parent or as a rental unit. Two years ago, Fresno, California, took the revolutionary step of allowing tiny houses on wheels to be considered permanent residences if they're parked on property that already has a larger home on it. Only one second house of 100 to 400 square feet is permitted on the property, and the occupant does not have to be a caregiver or a relative. Instead, the tiny house can be rented to anyone. For cities, part of the appeal of tiny houses as ADUs is that they can become a new type of affordable housing. The average cost of building a tiny house is only $23,000. The cost of buying one is closer to $60,000, still far below typical home prices. And tiny homes could help meet Plasterville's RENA numbers for low and very low-income housing. They can also be an attractive option for retirees who want to downsize after the kids leave the nest. Tiny houses often have similar square footage to retirement or assisted-living apartments. Developers in Kansas City built a tiny house village for homeless veterans and coupled it with mandatory programs like job training and drug rehabilitation. The project has been so successful that there are plans to build 36 more tiny homes that's in that community. Other tiny houses for the homeless projects are in process in Seattle, Austin, and Portland. They're continuing to be proposed as a solution for the more than the half a million Americans without a roof over their heads. The problem is that in the arcane world of zoning ordinances and building codes, tiny homes have been an outlier, a housing option still too new to be specifically addressed in local regulations. But we could fix that. Another positive development for tiny homes was a change made in January to the International Residential Code, the IRC, to establish for the first time specific guidelines for tiny homes. And we know states use the IRC as a model for their codes. States with the most progressive building codes or are home to the most interesting tiny house projects are Colorado, Florida, Massachusetts, Michigan, New York, Oregon, Texas, and California. California is one of the best states for being a tiny house enthusiast. Google the beautiful tiny house community in Lemon Cove. It's about 15 miles east of Isalia. I would hope as we consider this zoning ordinance amendment for accessory dwelling units, we include tiny homes as ADUs. Plasterville's a forward-thinking community, and while Fresno is ahead of us, we could learn from them and help our low and very low-income residents. It has the potential also to help some of our currently homeless. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, for your comments. Is there any, is there another member of the public that wishes to address the council on item 10.1, the accessory dwelling unit revisions? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. I think we can probably get an answer regarding tiny homes, and Mr. Rivas or Mr. Morris. The item before us this evening, of course, does not include that, so it would, it would have to go back as a separate item for full review. Mr. Rivas, do you have comments on, on Sue Rodman's?
I'll make general comments. Basically, you're probably aware that we had a quote tiny homes application come before us. Staff processed consideration of the tiny, tiny homes proposal through a preliminary plan review. Staff spent a lot of time in discussions with staff at the state housing and community development, and the term tiny homes, at least as staff looks at them, is, it's more, I guess, a more general description of what a tiny home is would be homes that are, as Ms. Rodman pointed out, the square footage is, is usually below 500 square feet. But the proposal that came before the city was basically a trailer park. And so I think the trailer manufacturing industry came up with the term tiny home to apply it to a recreational vehicle that has the architectural features of a home. So for example, if you look at a Airstream, we all know what an Airstream looks like. So you put an Airstream side by side with a tiny home, yet they're both recreational vehicles. They're both licensed by the Department of Motor Vehicles. They're both certified by HUD, Housing Community Development. So in our discussions with the state is they're only for temporary use. They're for camping. They're for mobile home parks that usually allow for stays, say, 30 days or less. A K O A campground, for example, is a good example that would allow RVs to park in them. They were used widely in emergencies, in emergency situations, say, for example, the town of Paradise that burned down. A lot of people lost their homes, didn't have a place to live, and so temporary mobile home parks were created for these people, so at least they had a place to live, and they can live in an RV. Other situations include recreational areas that maybe allow the parking of RVs seasonally. So you're looking at more than 30 days, but a lot of lakes throughout the state have these areas where you're actually able to stay, both, I think they're mainly private, but you're allowed to stay for an extended period of time. But again, it's temporary. The people don't live there permanently. The application that came before the city was for permanent use of a recreational vehicle as a home on a permanent basis. That's where they would get their mail. That'd be their legal address. The staff is not in favor of that. If, if the council is so inclined to consider that, we can certainly look, look into it. But we would be not in compliance with how the state of California views recreational vehicles at this time. We would prefer to look at other means providing for smaller square footage for a single-family dwelling. Say, the building code has recently been updated to create what's called an efficiency dwelling unit. And so what is the actual smallest square footage that somebody could legally build that can qualify as a single-family dwelling, having, you know, a bedroom, a kitchen, a bathroom, and those types of things? It's probably quite small, probably about maybe a little over 300 square feet, but I'm not sure exactly what that square footage is. So you can look at a tiny home. It could be a stick-built home. Or we would look at the manufactured home industry, and maybe they can manufacture homes that would then be certified by HCD, and then they would qualify because the state already usurps local jurisdictions from saying you can only build a stick-built house. We can't say no if somebody wants to put, place a manufactured home. So manufactured home industry needs to look at maybe constructing homes that could be as small as 300 or 400 square feet. That would be very, very affordable, but yet would meet all the regular requirements that you would see under the, under the California Building Code and would be certified by HCD. So we would look at those to be placed in basically a mobile home park as opposed to an RV park. So staff wants to make it clear that we see a big difference between an RV park and a mobile home park or a stick-built house. It would be an efficient, efficiency dwelling unit that would be constructed under the California Building Code. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions on, on that if you wish.
Thank you, Pierre.
I have a question on that. So these efficiency dwelling units that are 300 to 400 square feet, under this ordinance, they would not be allowed because this says that the maximum square, or the minimum square foot is 600?
They would not be allowed. The way I would look at it now is at least in this code, they wouldn't be allowed as an ADU. But staff would be hard-pressed to deny if, say, somebody had a, had a vacant lot, and somebody came in and wanted to build a 400 or 500-square-foot home, meeting the California Building Code, building a stick-built home. They can certainly do that. And then I could also see somebody then building on that same lot a primary dwelling unit that could be 1,200 square feet or larger, which would then serve as the primary unit. So that's something we're sort of looking at. How can we address that?
But if you had a 2,000-square-foot home, and you wanted to put an accessory dwelling unit on your property, it would have to be bigger than 600 square feet and below 1,200 square feet. It couldn't be 200 or 300 square feet.
That's correct.
Would it not make sense, or would it be allowed under California state law to allow for a smaller ADU?
We're, we're currently looking at that.
Okay, but that would be a separate ordinance?
But this, this ordinance changes were to reflect those two Assembly Bills, well, the one Assembly Bill and the one Senate Bill. So like I say, we'll probably come back to you, because I think it's in the city's best interest to create more dwelling units as well. So we, we do want to look at allowing for smaller homes. So that being manufactured home or stick-built homes as opposed to the use of recreational vehicles.
Yeah, I'll just add, again, I'll go back. So the SB 13 would allow for some of those ADUs that are under 750 square feet. But also, in SB 50, the large omnibus housing bill right now, they're talking about tiny homes. They're talking about modular, stackable type of units, prefabricated, that could go up, that could kind of go up to certain feet. So there's a lot, I think all those things are on the table right now, because if we're going to build 200,000 units of housing a year throughout the state of California, we're going to have to build up, and they're going to have to be built a heck of a lot cheaper than what we're building today. And so I think it's great that we've brought this up. I think it's something that we're going to look at towards the future. And I think a lot of this is still going to be discussed, and I think we'll get a lot more levers to be able to pull once we finally get a, a package. Whether we see it this year or next year, there will be a housing bill that passes that probably changes significantly how we look at planning, zoning, a lot of other things going forward. And so I, I think for now, you know, we should go ahead and adopt, or at least move the first reading on these ADUs. But certainly, I think we can be on the forefront of some of these things as, as they come down. But a lot of this is still going to be to-be-continued work in the state legislature.
That sounds like a motion.
Because I'll second that.
All right. Is there any other discussion? I, I think that as, as my colleagues have pointed out, this, we will hear from the state soon that we will lower the square footage. And I'm sure the industry will come up with acceptable, appropriate designs for those, away from the concerns that we have of the things that are really recreational vehicles. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So this is introducing and waiving the first reading, which sometimes is always a very tricky motion to make up here. Vice Mayor handled that quite well. All right. Moving on to an item that we have moved up in this evening's agenda, and that is item 12.4, to authorize the installation of a baseball batting cage by Plasterville Rotary Club at Rotary Park. Mr. Morris, I believe you prepared the staff report.
I, I did. Due to some staff vacancies at the time, I prepared this one. So normally, I want to mention, too, this item would have gone to the Recreation and Park Commission prior to coming, if it even required to go to the city council, we would determine at that point. However, the Recreation and Park Commission, their normal meeting would have occurred during spring break, and they, they previously canceled that before this issue came before them. So I prepared this item to bring to the council. Again, the other reason is we did have at least one concerned neighbor that expressed concern with this coming forward, and therefore we felt it was important to allow the public to speak to it and see what concerns might be there. So the proposal came from the Plasterville Rotary Club to install a batting cage, a baseball batting cage, in the outfield, not in the outfield area, but beyond the outfield area behind the scoreboard at Rotary Park. Some of the work already started, and before we asked Rotary to discontinue until we had a chance to review it and make sure that it would work in that area, they have discontinued the work at this time. The attached drawings show you basically what they're requesting. They would install a, a concrete pathway going back to the batting cage that would be located behind, kind of behind the scoreboard in the centerfield area of Rotary Park. And we, we reviewed it with our staff. We don't see any major concerns with this. All the maintenance of the batting cage will be the responsibility of Rotary. They would take that on. We assume, and they, in my brief discussions with them, they assumed that the netting of the batting cage will probably be taken down during the winter months, as it would not be used very much during that time, and that would keep it from, you know, the weather and et cetera, in better shape. So, so we don't, we don't see any major concerns that we've come up with this, as long as it's installed according to the guidelines that are there. It would, in discussing with our building department, would require a building permit. So a condition of them moving forward would be to come into the building department and get a building permit, permit to install the, the batting cage. And at this time, I think that's all I have, unless there's any questions of council that I can ask, or our new director, Terry Zeller, can also, I've introduced him to this, and we've toured the site. So if you have questions, perhaps he can answer those also.
I was just going to ask if Mr. Zeller had, had an opportunity to go out and visit what I think is a really great softball field. Any questions from councilmembers for Mr. Morris on this item? All right. Because there's an applicant for this, I'm going to go ahead and ask if there's any member in the audience this evening from the Rotary Club that would like to present any additional information to the city council or maybe be available for questions. Good evening.
Evening, certainly, Mr. Mayor. I'm Kurt Raffetto, president of the Rotary Club of Plasterville. I was here not too long ago. I'm getting good at these city council meetings. Not as good as you guys, though. You keep it, please. It came to us from Haintown Little League to put in the, a need for, for batting cage. We had a fundraiser last fall and raised quite a bit of money. We got some individual donations. Haintown Little League stepped up and gave us about 30% of the cost for this. So we have all the funds. We're, we kind of did the Rotary thing and got started on the project like we would, not thinking that a batting cage would be an issue at a baseball park. Not to correct you, mayor, but it's baseball. No softball up there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know. That was a faux pas on my part.
That's right. And it is, I would say it's back in right field. It's behind right field. It's very, it's relatively clear area, just some weeds in there, and so those won't be there anymore. The idea of the concrete, all the way back, is ease of access. We do have coaches. One, I don't know if he's still, he's not still coaching, but a good friend of mine is in a wheelchair but still coaches baseball, and I want to make it so he can get back there. make it so he can get back there. That was the main reason for putting concrete that far. Again, it only goes through the batting cage, not doing anything beyond right, centerfield, around the rest of the field. Just as a side note, we did get your railings installed, and they're all painted now along the bleachers, seating area, so, I don't know if you had time to see those or not. Did that Thursday night. So, happy to take any other questions, or?
All right, Mr. Raffetto, let me see if the council has any questions for you. Do we have any questions for the Rotary Club on what's being proposed here this evening? All right, thank you. Let me see if there's any member of the public that wishes to address the council on item 12.4, the batting cage at Rotary Park.
Good evening, once again. My name is Jeanne Rezebeck, and I work and reside in Placerville, and for the last four years, I've enjoyed Rotary Park, and the neighborhood of the rural ambiance it exhibits today. My employer resides directly adjacent to Rotary, and I visit the park four to five days a week. Rotary Park has been called the crown jewel of the Little League parks in El Dorado County, and it has a small-town feel to it, a perfect fit for the neighborhood and the city of Placerville. Sadly, Placerville is in jeopardy of losing that reputation by virtue of urbanization of this park. The Rotary Organization believes that putting a batting cage outside the center of the right field would enhance the utilization of that park, and what they have not considered is the park is more than just a Little League park, it is a neighborhood park for all to enjoy. Rotary Park embarked, Rotary embarked on the construction of the batting cages without the proper permits and without advising the neighborhood residents of those who frequent the park of their plans. The fact is that there are two perfectly good batting cages that are being ignored, raises questions of what the true intent that Rotary has. For the past four years, there has been little maintenance performed by Rotary. The only activity I have seen has been in the early spring, when they are preparing for the upcoming Little League season. More picks up most of the trash and the garbage, et cetera. The city maintains the playing field, and I personally contribute regularly by cutting back the blackberries that would otherwise impede the trail that goes around the park. I pick up the garbage scattered on the ground quite frequently, and I do this because Rotary doesn't. Their primary focus is on the baseball aspect of the park and nothing else. The construction of this batting cage comes to great detriment to the park, the cutting of trees, and the large stumps the workers left behind is unsightly, along with the brush wantonly tossed aside through the park. They dropped a tree, they cut it up and they took it, but they left the brush behind. Bulldozing a path that would allegedly lead to the cage creates large puddles when it rains, you can't walk, you can't walk around it, you know, it's big, huge puddles, rendering the path surrounding the park impassable. They, I understand the city stopped construction, but until the appropriate permits were obtained and the plans submitted, which left quite a mess, however, was it necessary to uproot a park bench and leave it on its side next to the playground? That has nothing to do with batting cages. Undoubtedly, cement will have to be poured. When that occurs, Rotary Park will look like any other urban park found in populated metropolitan cities. I also frequent Lyons Park. There are no batting cages there, despite it being a much larger park with two playing fields, and the teams that play there are adult teams, and they seem to play good baseball without batting cages. I fail to see a legitimate reason why they would want to put a batting cage in for Little League. There's absolutely, I fail to see a reason for, to put one in, you know, and so, I strongly urge you to reconsider this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Good evening, if you could state your name for the record, please?
Hello, everybody, my name's Dale Gomes, president of Hangtown Little League. I have to disagree a little bit with the comments that were just made in a number of respects. First of all, in terms of its impact on the park itself, you're not going to see this batting cage, it's not going to impact the trail around the park. Sorry, as I think this through, the trail that's used for dogs and the like, I'm sorry, I hate the microphone, is below the area where the concrete path is going to go, it's not going to be impacted in any way by the batting cage. In terms of improving the field for Little League use, spectacular, and immeasurable, to be honest. Lyons Park is very different, it's a softball field, you don't use batting cages at a softball field. Baseball fields use hardballs, hardballs hurt. Rotary Park right now...
Can I ask you to speak into the microphone? We do have an audience, we do need to get this on YouTube.
My apologies. Rotary Park right now does not have a guarded, safe place for kids to throw, hit, play catch during a Little League baseball game. What I mean by that is, it's a very small park. When kids are warming up, when relief pitchers are getting loose on the side of the fields, there are bullpens, but those bullpens are just adjacent to the foul territory on both the right field and left field foul lines, which means balls go into that area from foul balls on a regular basis. Right now, Little League International's rules require kids to get in there with full masks and helmets before they're even allowed to go in there and play catch, as a catcher with a pitcher warming up. There's no place for a kid to go and swing a baseball bat while a game is in session. This batting cage would fulfill that need. There's no place for the teams that are going to play behind the teams that are on the field to even warm up at Rotary Park, because of the nature of the field. The character of the field, as it was described, is true, it's a crown jewel of Little League baseball. District 54 Little Leagues want to come to Placerville to play there. It doesn't mean we can't improve it. When teams come into Placerville to play, they're stuck standing on the sidewalks up above Rotary until the game ends. This would give teams an opportunity to go warm up, to hit off of a tee, to have their pitchers and their players throwing and playing catch while another game is going on on the field. It really is an incredible project. I don't think you're even going to be able to see it largely from the stands or from the field, because it's tucked in behind the field, in an area that candidly, nobody has gone in years. The Rotary Club cleared this space in order to make room for it. That's, the work that was done was really just clearing, and it was just clearing of brush and debris and the like. Nothing about this area was utilized prior to this project being proposed, so I don't think anybody that uses the park for non-baseball uses is going to be impacted by this project at all.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Would someone else like to address the council on this item? Good evening, you need to pull the microphone up, please.
I'm Ted Jubba, I live here in Placerville, I live about 100 yards from Rotary Park, and I'm here to speak in support of this project. I'm also the owner of the unimproved parcel that is directly south of the playground at Rotary Park, so my property does adjoin the park. I think this is a good idea, I think that anything we can do to sort of push out the nighttime knucklehead activity that happens in Rotary Park every now and then, is a good thing, and I think that baseball at the park is part of the characteristic of the community, and I'd certainly like to see more of it. The only question I have is, does the applicant expect any additional impact on parking? Because when that lot gets parked up along Clark Street, it does become single lane, and we've noticed, I mean, I think it's a good thing that we have more kids here playing baseball, but that does mean that there's more cars parked along the sides of Clark Street. So, if this does have an additional impact on parking, I just think that's something to consider, but in general, I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Would someone else like to address the council?
Do you want an answer about parking?
And, please, no, thank you, not right now. We'll ask you, we'll get that question answered just a second. Is there some other member that wishes to, a member of the public which should address the council on that? Yes, sir, good evening.
Hello, my name's Nathan Foltz, I am on the Little League Board, Hangtown Little League, I'm the field maintenance helper, here in support of the batting cage. I think it's a huge improvement to the park for little to no city cost. I think the impact to the ground and the surrounding area has been very minimal, the brush clearing was, I think, more of a defensible fire safety issue more than it was beautiful sprawling trees. I think the pathway leading to the park, if there was puddles before, I feel that a small concrete pathway would probably fix that problem with any puddles on the trail. I wanted to say that there is not a batting cage there now. There is two pitching, warm-up pitching areas, but no true batting cage for somebody to swing away, other than the batter at the game. As we have practices at Rotary regularly, we don't have a spot except for one athlete batting. It'd be nice to have another spot with another coach and working a couple kids doing drills or whatnot inside the cage, so I think it'll be a huge improvement for us as a league and for the city and the park in general.
Thank you very much for your comments.
What was that?
I said, "Thank you for your comments." Is there someone else wishing to address the council on this item? All right, seeing no one new coming for our order, I will ask if a member of either the Hangtown Little League or the Rotary can provide the information on the parking concern that was brought out.
You bet, Mr. Mayor. I don't anticipate really much more traffic, I think that the folks that are there are going to be using the batting cage, and like, as Mr. Gomes said, the folks that are coming for the next game are going to be using it. Most of the Little Leaguers can't drive yet, so that shouldn't be an issue. But I don't think it's going to be, it's not going to be a destination, it's going to be their part of the field. And, there's not going to be nighttime activity, just if I can throw that in, the lights on the field do nothing for back by the batting cage, and we have no intention of adding any back there. As far as some of the brush that's left there, I ran out of daylight, so that's why there's still brush there, but it won't be there for long, so, all right.
Kurt, before you go, I have a quick question. Do you anticipate this being open to the general public, or just being used by Hangtown Little League at this time?
We haven't talked to, to that extent. I noticed up at Forbay, the field up there has a sign that it's, the batting cage is only available for coaches and players, kind of, I think more of as a liability thing. Obviously, if we're not there, we're not going to have a lock on it, because you can cut through the net, so it's, it would be open for anybody that wanted to use it during the day, if they want to pitch to their kid, they can certainly use the batting cage.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the information, additional information. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing for this item, bring it back to the council for discussion and action. I had a couple questions, this puts our new park director in kind of a pickle. I would assume that, I know Rotary has done enough of these projects, that the gradient on the pathway is going to be at the ADA compliant grade.
Yes, this is Terry Zeller, Community Services Director. I looked at the grade, and it does appear that it's not going to have any ADA implications, it's fairly flat.
All right, thank you, appreciate that. Is there any other questions for staff? Comments?
I have comments. I have, I coached up there for, played baseball and coached up there for many, many years, and I know that having a batting cage and going to fields outside of this area that has, that have batting cages is a huge advantage, first in their play and also the development of the baseball players. It is, it is, you know, you pay a lot of money to go to some of these coaches' houses where they have batting cages to get coaching, and it would be, I think it leaves our teams up here at a slight disadvantage with some of the other teams that we play, and we still beat them, but, you know, I'd like to beat them better, so...
Beat them more.
No, beat them more. More better. So, you know, I understand the concerns about the aesthetics, I don't, I hear the concerns about this aesthetics, I don't necessarily agree with them, but I do, I do find it a real value to our baseball league to have this there, and actually, and another way to support our youth as well. I can't tell you how many different times Rotary has stepped up to the plate and supported that, that baseball field. Their name's on it, and they own it, I wouldn't say they own it, own it, but they take responsibility for making sure that the things that are there are done right, and that they're done, you know, to code, I guess. And, over the years, I have seen many, many improvements to that baseball field to where it's at now. So, to Rotary, thank you for stepping up again.
Comments, questions?
I have one question. It looks like there's a house in this picture, kind of behind and to the right of the proposed area, and I was just wondering if that resident has mentioned any concerns, or if there's expected to be like a noise nuisance?
Wouldn't it be beneficial to have the applicant come up again and give us a little background on any potential...
I believe that's an abandoned barn, I don't think there's anything, is that correct?
That's, that's part of the Johnson property, sir, and there's about six acres there, actually part of our driveway in Rotary Park is theirs, they've kind enough to give us an easement to use it. When you go down to the snack bar, that's their property. I talked to Peggy Johnson, who's the daughter of Mrs. Johnson, who's there, and she's in care of her all the time. Actually, the daughter is living there, and she's in favor of it. And she was very happy to see me out there clearing some of that brush as well, because they actually have an egress gate that they couldn't get through until I cleared it for them, so they are in favor of it. And they're the closest neighbors, certainly to the cage.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate that. I tried to tell him it was the Johnson property, but he didn't believe me. He was amazed by the old tennis court. And I said, "That was, that was quite the property on top of the hill there one time." It still is a beautiful setting. Any other comments, questions?
My only comment is that if it wasn't for Rotary Club, we would not have that park, I don't think.
And, again, I don't want to put Terry on the spot again, but I would like to clear up whatever misconception there might be about who does the daily maintenance out there, and I certainly don't think it's the Rotary Club's responsibility.
I was going to address that, too.
Cleve, do you, that's our regular city park crew that...
Right, we maintain the park. They do some extra work on the fields, et cetera, during the baseball season, as I understand, but the general maintenance, we take care of.
If there's garbage that's not getting picked up, please call myself or the city manager. It does not reflect on Rotary out there at Rotary Park.
So what she was talking about with the berry bushes and everything, that would be our responsibility?
That would also be our responsibility. Another topic in just a couple of minutes is going to be fire safety, and from what I can tell, most of what you removed is fits right inside the potential wildfire safety ordinances that we're going to be considering a little later. Yes, I appreciate the crown jewel of Little League, that's how I always remembered it, and I still have scars from hardball Little League, though I remember that. And good to hear that the kids are required to be a little safer than I was out there running around getting hit, so that was good. I would just, I would ask if there's a motion?
I'll move to authorize the installation of the batting cage.
I'll second it.
Is there a second? All right, we have a motion, I would go, just like to go ahead and comment that, you know, I can understand how these things get a little out of whack. I'm sure that a lot of the folks that help Rotary, this is the time of the year when they're just about to become busy for seven days a week, and they have time, as the rainy season is ending, to go out and get started on a project, and they don't always have faith that they can get through the bureaucratic red tape. We're dealing with another project similar to that right now, and it's understood that when you can get these things done by your volunteers, you have to facilitate it. So, I think when it all is said and done, when you're allowed to finish the work out there, there won't be any more puddles, there'll be a safe, accessible pathway, we'll have a new batting cage. I appreciate your wisdom and realizing that it could either get vandalized or just wisely left open to anyone that can use it. Again, that's just great community thinking. So, and again, if there's an issue with the maintenance of the park, please let the city know, that, again, that does not reflect on Hangtown Little League or, you know, the Rotary. So, with that, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. I would ask, when do you guys think you'll have it ready? We want to come out and, we want to come out and see.
It takes me to get that permit.
Probably by Friday.
We'll get the permit, we're ready to pour, I have the cage in a week, but it'll be about three weeks, I guess.
Okay, great, so about the end of May. Well, let's see, where are we? Yeah, almost the end of April. Yeah, Cleve and I know how to expedite permits. All right, thank you very much for all you do for the community, gentlemen. Moving back in line with our other items, we'll move back to item 12.1, which is to review a proposed vegetation management ordinance and provide input to staff. Mr. Morris, here we are, I believe this is draft number three?
Yeah, at least.
Before we touch it, right now, and it's...
So, thank you, Mayor and Council. What I wanted to do tonight, you have the ordinance, we've made some fairly significant changes to it from the last one that you saw. We had a good meeting with the Fire Safe Council, we made some changes based on that, and some other changes based on our own research, and I want to thank Mr. Driscoll, who has taken a lot of that responsibility and done a lot of the changes for us, and researched this, and looked at what is best. So, what I wanted to do tonight, I didn't include it in your packet because it wasn't there at the time, but I have prepared this presentation, which will be, is my proposed presentation, I'll be using next Tuesday night, which is the... presentation I'll be using next Tuesday night, which is the public workshop that we will be doing to introduce this ordinance to the public. So I'm not going to go into as much detail as I plan on going into next week, but please ask questions and concerns that you may have with the current ordinance as it's proposed tonight. I want to emphasize, yes?
Can I just make one comment? Cleve and I had a chance to talk about this a little bit before. We probably want to let you get through this once because this, again, is just, this is a draft. This is what's being proposed. So let's let Cleve roll through this once, and then we can go back as the council, just before we open to the public, because otherwise we'll never get through the whole thing. So, Cleve, you're on.
And again, you have the draft ordinance, and I want to emphasize as we're going into this, when we, one of my first statements next Tuesday night will be, we want to work on this together with the public. This is not something we're throwing out there and say, "This is what we're going to do." This is somewhat of a starting point, even though we've been through quite a bit. We recognize that to try to get this implemented now and put in place for enforcement this summer is not going to be feasible. We would be enforcing during the hottest time of the year, which is not the time when you want to be doing, cutting brush and taking these back. We will proceed with some education, a lot of education we want to do this summer, but we want to take our time in adopting this ordinance. Originally, we thought we might be ready to introduce this in May, based on some review that I've done and looking at this. I'm not sure we will be ready in May because I think we want to make sure we get this right. And there are some concerns that you'll see that will come up as I go through this presentation that I think we need to fully understand and be ready to address so that we can have this, the best ordinance that is, will work for Placerville. So with that, I'm going to move through this fairly quickly. I know you just got the presentation tonight. Again, not going to go into the detail that I plan to go into next week, but I want to highlight what is in the ordinance, and I will add that most of this language that is in here, the majority of the language, is straight from the ordinance. So it's not, it's not sugarcoating anything. It's the exact language that is in the ordinance for everybody to see. So first, this is simply the purpose statement out of the ordinance, and the purpose is to reduce fire danger, in short. Next section, this just says who is responsible. Every owner, occupant, and person in control of any unimproved or improved parcel is responsible for taking care of that property and making sure that the combustible material and hazardous vegetation is removed or reduced. Next, defensible space. We talked about, you hear that term a lot. This basically is just defining that, and that is that a 100-foot space around any structure on your, on the property is required to be, the hazardous materials or combustible materials have to be removed in that 100-foot, or reduced in that 100-foot space. Next, going along with that, you can see there's two, two parts to this. The, excuse me, the first part there on number one is 100 feet from going around any structure. The second part is on an adjacent improved parcel. If there is a space that goes onto the adjacent parcel, that adjacent parcel is then responsible for making that defensible space if it's within 100 feet of a structure on another parcel. Does that make sense, what I'm saying there? That's been a question that's come up because if, there's many areas where there will be less than that 100 feet space from your house to your parcel. If there's additional area on the other side of that parcel line that is, fits the hazardous vegetation area, then that would have to be cleared by the adjacent property owner. Okay? And there's other language in here that we'll see that talks about a good neighbor policy. Hopefully, you can work with your neighbors to jointly figure out how to clear that space and et cetera. The amount of fuel modification necessary depends on a lot of things, including the flammability of the structure. There's different things with building standards now that can reduce the wildfire danger for buildings, so there's different things that can play into that. As you can see here, the next item, maintain a 10-foot strip of land next to the roadway, so that roadway coming onto your property has to be 10-foot wide strip plus 15 feet high along there. She needs to be cleared along the side of the roadway. That's not, the city's right-of-way, but off of the city right-of-way. So that area needs to be cleared also. The city's responsible for clearing their, their own right-of-way. Next item, the intensity of fuel management. Let's see where we're at here. I skipped too far on my pages, sorry. The intensity of the fuel management, fuels may vary within that 100 feet, and that'll be up to the enforcement officer to determine, you know, what, what needs to be done there. So that can vary. There is some, some responsibility or some opportunity for the enforcement officer to look at that. Some simple items are remove the portion of a tree that extends within 10 feet of a chimney. Climbing vines are to be removed from, from trees and structures. Maintain trees and shrubs or other plants adjacent to or overhanging a building free of dead or dying wood. Maintain the roof of a structure free of leaves, needles, or other vegetation materials, and maintain the property free of ladder fuels. So moving on to some other items, again, the enforcement official may mandate additional fuel management or less, depending on different situations. Again, when an occupied building is less than 100 feet from a property line, the combustible material, hazardous material on the adjacent parcel presents a fire hazard, that adjacent parcel then is responsible. That's another section that's saying a similar thing to what we discussed earlier, as far as who's responsible on an adjacent parcel. Where the terrain, there's discussion in there about mowing or disking your property. If the terrain doesn't allow for that, the enforcement officer can look at other ways to reduce that vegetation on a property. Goats, there you go. There's this item E, you don't allow any vegetation to interfere with street and, with the street and emergency vehicle access regardless of whether it's a public or a private street. You have to keep those, those streets clear so the emergency vehicles have, can get through to them. So an unimproved parcel that is less than two acres is required to have the hazardous vegetation removed, cleared of all ways. That doesn't say you have to take down every tree, but the trees have to be trimmed up to what is required. You'll see another drawing that I have in here that will show what that is to be. But the, the grass should be mowed down to four inches or less. And if there is a parcel, unimproved parcel that is more than two acres, then it can simply have a 30-foot fire break around the perimeter of the property. So it doesn't have to mow the entire property. It can have a fire break instead of that, so. Next item, the enforcement officer, again, has the authority to increase or decrease what those fire breaks may be. You can see it can be greater than 30, but no greater than 100 feet, or less than 30 feet. That's, that's the minimum. Again, item I, dry leaves, wood chips on parcels must be disced or turned under. However, there's another section that says you can have up to, I believe it's up to three or four inches of those that is simply a ground cover that is there. If it's thicker than that and heavier than that, though, it's treated as a mulch or compost. And as you can see here, it states that has to be within a container if you are using it for that purpose. Next item, insurance companies, if they have a qualified person or a fire expert come in and look at it, they can, this allows them to require additional guidelines or regulations on your property. So if they look at it and say, "For your circumstance, we're going to require 120 feet," this gives an insurance company that right actually to do that and look at more stringent regulations. A person is not required to manage fuels. This goes back to that good neighbor policy. You're not required to manage fuel on your neighbor's property or any other property that you don't have control of. That person on that property, if it's within 100 feet of your structure on your property, is responsible for, for doing that. Moving on, improved and unimproved parcel adjacent to roadways, again, the enforcement officer can define what needs to be done on those properties that are adjacent to roadways. Item M is pretty self-explanatory, I think. Prior to constructing a new building, making sure that it is in certification that it, from the building official, that it is in compliance with all applicable state and local building standards. I think we have that anyway, but there may be additional standards that would be required depending on the situation, so. There, item N is the good neighbor policy that we've talked about a couple of times throughout the presentation. And then item O is that real estate, real estate agents will be required to disclose to potential buyers this requirement to keep their property in accordance with the vegetation management ordinance, so. So this is a brief diagram that shows what is required. You have your 100 feet of separation, and, but within that, you have what we're calling zone one, zones one and zone two. This comes from the Cal Fire website. Within the first 30 feet is zone one. The outside 70 feet or up to 100 feet is the zone two. Zone one is defined as, on this chart, goes out 30 feet, remove all dead plants, grass, weeds, vegetation, so pretty clean within that 30-foot area. Dead or dry leaves, pine needles, et cetera, from roof and rain gutters should need to be removed. Trim trees regularly to keep, and this is, this is one that I want to really point out to you, this third item here. Trim trees regularly to keep branches a minimum of 10 feet from other trees. So in other words, the branch of one tree should be a minimum of 10 feet away from a branch of another tree. I know that is one that's going to be a key point of discussion I think we're going to have to look at because I'll sell you, on my property, I know I have trees that are, the branches come right up next to each other. So that is truly something that we're going to have to look at, and as I, I was sitting in my office a few days ago, looking out my window, and I looked at the hillside, and I said, "Half the trees on that hillside would have to be removed under that condition." So again, I want to emphasize, this is, this is kind of a starting point. This is what is recommended. And I want to emphasize also, that is within that, that 30-foot area. I'm not sure that that applies to the, under the 70 feet. I don't think it does. So anyway, that's something to consider. This is the more restricted area closer to your structures. Keep branches at least 10 feet away from chimney. That's only a given. Relocate wood piles to zone two, so, you know, over 30 feet away from your, from your home. Remove or prune flammable plants and shrubs near windows. If it's pruning, keeping them well-pruned and low and below those windows. Remove vegetation that could catch fire from around and under decks. Create a separation between trees, shrubs, and items that could catch fire, such as patio furniture, wood piles, swing sets, et cetera. And then zone two, again, extends out to 100 feet. Keep it mowed down to the, to the four inches. Create horizontal spacing between shrubs and trees. I'll pull up a diagram here right after this slide. Create vertical spacing between grass, shrubs, and trees. And then remove leaves, needles, twigs, et cetera. However, as stated before, they can be allowed up to three inches in depth to create a ground cover there. So this is showing the vertical clearance. As you can see, six feet from the ground to the lower branches. And then don't have this situation where you may have the six feet on one, but there's another tree close to that creates that, that ladder fuels, as they call it, to go up to the taller trees. And then here, trying to read my own slide, minimum vertical clearance is three times between the, this shrub, so three times the height of this shrub up to the bottom of this tree is, is what they recommend for what those lower branches should be. So, and then horizontal clearance, I apologize, this one's kind of hard to see. It's hard for me to see. Again, here, three times separation, and, and there's your 10-foot separation. So again, this is showing the 10-foot separation between the tree branches there. And then if you're on slopes, they recommend even more. Here, it's four times for shrubs, 30 feet for, for a medium slope, and then up to, help me out, what does that say?
30.
30, so what's this one?
20.
20, I'm sorry. 20 feet and 30 feet if it's even a steeper slope. Again, four times for the, for the shrubs. So these are diagrams, again, off of Cal Fire's website that are recommended for those zones, zones one and two. Next item, inspection. Basically, this just says that the enforcement officer has the authority to go and inspect property. This also states, as you see in here, that they can go on property to inspect. However, it does not grant them the right to enter into any dwelling or structure unless it talks about later. If it's clearly an abandoned structure, they, they do have the right to go in that. So they can go on the property if necessary to inspect, cannot go in structures without permission unless it's clearly abandoned. The abatement process, this is simply a list of items that are required to be on the abatement notice that would go to a property owner. So there's these on this page. They're, they're pretty clear what is, what needs to be abated, and the date by which they need to be abated by, then going into the, the legal right that we have to do that and et cetera. So all of these items have to be, would have to be on an abatement notice to someone that we find in violation of the ordinance. Summary abatement proceedings, this simply says that there may be critical circumstances that may require immediate removal, which then allows the enforcement officer to take care of that and without going to further hearings and notices and et cetera, if it's that serious that they feel it needs to be done immediately. There's an appeal process after that notice has gone out, and this defines what that is. The, the appeal has to be filed within 15 days, and then there's a hearing set up within another 15 days, and then the hearing is held, and, and then the, the results of the hearing are issued, I believe it's within another 15 days. So you've got a total of 45 days in there. Whoop, I apologize, hit the wrong button. And then after that, they have seven days to actually clean it up after the decision has been rendered from the, assuming the hearing officer says, "Yes, you need to follow through and clean that up." Other items, seasonal designation. If you have a property that has been a problem for the last two years, that third year you come up, you can simply declare it a nuisance and have it abated without going into further processes, if it's a continual thing that's happening over, over several years, so. Removal of hazardous vegetation and combustible materials. If compliance has not been accomplished through the previous process we looked at, then we can hire a contractor or use city employees to come in and have the flammable vegetation or combustible material removed. Collection of costs, all costs for removal. The city has the right to collect those, and there's a procedure that we would send those costs to the property owner, requiring payment. There's actually a hearing that we would take to the city council declaring that we're allowed to collect those costs and that costs are accurate. Following that, if, if they're not paid within 30 days after the city council adopts the resolution of the costs, then we have the right to place a lien on the property to collect the costs going forward. Last item, violations. This is kind of a, somewhat of a moot point because these are rather, rather small, the violations. You can see $100 fine, a $200 fine, a $500 fine for the third violation. But the key is, the real, the real fine that would take place on this is when we have to actually remove it and then charge the property owner for that. So this, I believe, is not, in fact, I don't know that we would really, we may look at levying these fines, but not as common because our goal is to get it removed. If it's not removed, we will remove it, and then the real fine will be that they'll be responsible for paying that cost at that point for removing it. So I realize that was a very quick run-through because of the meeting. I didn't want to take a lot of time with it, but I can, myself or the city attorney can answer any questions you might have. I did get an email, we got this email, you saw today. Those are some pretty simple questions. Some of them are some corrections that we need to make to the, the ordinance, but they're, they're fairly minor that can be addressed as we go forward, so. fairly minor that can be addressed as we go forward, so.
Thank you, Cleve. Would it be the desire of the council to, because I know, I saw several folks react as we were going through this, and I sat on my hands also. Would we like to go back to the beginning and then go through this and question, comment?
However you'd like to do it.
Because, again, these are reflections of what's in the written material that was in the staff report.
Correct. Most of these are word-for-word from the ordinance.
And these are also based on Cal Fire's current regulations.
Correct.
Both viable, so this would be perhaps an easier way to review. So, maybe go back, if it's okay, we'll go back to slide one. And, you know, want to go through slide by slide?
You do that, Dave. Thanks.
Andy, I think we hit the highlights.
Okay. Well.
Because we're going to do this all again on the 30th.
Okay.
On the 30th, correct.
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, the good neighbor, all that, was new, this go-around?
Yeah.
I think it's a good thing. I think it's really important, but do we, we have the legal ability to force somebody to clear their land in relationship to their neighbor's home?
Yeah, I think we do. One of the reasons I hesitated initially is that I wasn't sure that Placerville had been earmarked with the right designation. And that, I mean, that some of the, well, the government code section, 51183.5, talks about a designation of a very high fire hazard severity zone, which are very technical terms, and I didn't know whether or not we had been designated that. Cleve and I were talking about that as late as this afternoon, and it appears that we have. That means that 51182, which is the mirror of the Public Resources Code, which sets out dispensable space, would be applicable to the City of Placerville. So, I believe we can enforce that with respect to an adjacent property.
Okay. And then, what's, how would that go in terms of all of the notices and everything? Would you do the same posting of notices on the adjacent property?
You'd notify that property owner that say that, let's say there was a structure on a parcel that was within 50 feet of their boundary line, and there was another 50 feet across on the neighbor's property that constituted a fire hazard and needed to be cleared. That property owner would be notified that they would need to make that clearing of their property according to the ordinance.
Okay. And then, one other question. On the unimproved parcels?
Karen, could you talk into your mic, please?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
On the unimproved parcels, is that better? The 30-foot perimeter, is that enough space? Is that standard for?
I would defer to a fire marshal or the fire chief, but I can tell you, I can tell you that this wasn't my creation, and I would thank everybody that, the number of jurisdictions that did a lot of hard work on these, putting together their various ordinances. We looked at, well, Tom Cumston from the Fire Safe Council provided us some additional information, but we looked at Sonoma County, we looked at Nevada County, we looked at Sacramento County, we looked at Placer, we looked at a number of what other jurisdictions had done, Cameron Park, Eldorado County, and tried to take what was the best of all of them and what made the most sense. In doing that, we probably got more in there than maybe what we needed, but we were trying to give the council the ability to look at these things and say, yeah, that may be too much, you can take that out if you don't want to, this sort of approach to it.
So, in addition to that, that 30 feet seems to be the standard in everything that we've seen in terms of, and remember, that's for a fire break, so that would be basically removing everything around that 30 feet, is my understanding, when you do a fire break around an unimproved. So, basically disking up, you see that on certain properties around the state as you go, where they've disced a certain area around their property line. So, that's what they're looking for. The other thing is, remember too, in answer to that, if the enforcement officer says, no, that 30 feet is not enough, they can do that for various reasons, depending on what those are, they could require more.
I don't know what Karen was thinking, but I was envisioning, there's like a lot of massive trees and bushes and stuff, and they, the property owner didn't do anything about it, and then we put 30 feet around it. I don't think that's going to protect it, at least in my mind. I was thinking 30 feet wouldn't be enough if you had.
Tall trees.
Yeah, if you had a lot of vegetation.
Well, it won't, it won't protect their property. Their property could burn.
Or mine, if I'm opposite that 30.
You're right.
You know what I'm saying?
Could, yeah.
If there's this huge, so what, my question is, I've got two beautiful redwood trees, but they do meet each other. I have nothing else around, so would they look at that situation or make me cut down one of my trees?
I can't give you an answer. That would be the enforcement, who would be the fire chief?
You know, because there's a lot of, like you said, you look out, and I mean, all trees, they're, you know, they're growing up around here, and they're all meeting each other. We're going to end up cutting down Placerville.
That's a key area that I'm concerned. I talked to Michael and, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Saragoza and Mayor Acuna today about that, and as I mentioned, I looked out my window and said, wow, we're going to be taking half that hillside out.
Exactly.
We don't let Cleve look out windows anymore, since this morning he's.
He's not coming to my house.
Questions at this point?
I do, I do have a couple of questions. You talked about the insurance. It's almost sounded like you gave the insurance agents authority, you know, code enforcement authority, or to make that, and it's really, I think what you're trying to say, I hope, is that they can, they can say, we're going to cancel the insurance if you don't do it.
Yeah. The reason I put that in there, and I, that was, I think that was in the first draft, too.
Or co-creation.
But, a number, a lot of people, let me put it this way, in the county and in Placerville are getting their insurance canceled.
Yeah.
In fact, one of the fellows from the Fire Safe Council indicated that, the city manager and myself. It's nothing really more than what an insurance company can do anyways, because it's a civil relationship, it's a contract, and they can put whatever conditions they want on their insurance policy that they're going to issue you, so they can have a lot stricter requirements than what the city might require if they're going to issue an insurance policy. That's a matter of a contract between a private party and the insurance company. But it does somehow make them feel a little warm and fuzzy to know that the county, the city in this case is saying, yes, you can do that. So, it's in there. It's, it doesn't have to be in there. Is it necessary for it? Absolutely not. Does it hurt anything? Probably not.
Okay. Improved properties over two acres, I don't necessarily see that designation. It doesn't provide much guidance for that.
Improved?
Improved.
You're right. Other than the clearance around streets.
Okay.
Ingress and egress, it does not, and I was thinking about that as we were going through this tonight, because we do have some properties that are quite large, there are not a lot of them. Pierre, you think know which ones I'm talking about, where there's a lot of acreage, but there's only maybe one house on one parcel, which could constitute a fire hazard. So, it's something I think we need to take a further look at.
Okay. And then, my last question is, the date things are to be done by, there's this, it's kind of this, kind of this fuzzy area where I see where May 1st, I believe, is the date things need to be done by in one place in there, if it's been ordered by the city, but there's a strange, with the late winter and a fast spring like this, we're kind of in this gray area. Is there, are we going to give any instruction as to the expected time that your property should be cleared within this document? So that it, so there's some guidance? Because what are we left to as a shut-off date?
I think those dates are rather arbitrary, but they tend to be based on seasonal experiences, and so that's why they're there. Like I say, other jurisdictions are doing similar things. Like any other ordinance or any law, it's going to be dependent upon how it is enforced and using good judgment and good sense. You have a winter, for example, that goes on, and a wet spring into June, you cut the weeds down, they're going to go right back up again when the sun comes out. So, you need to use good common sense in enforcing any ordinance.
So, I work really good on a deadline, and I think, even if, even if it's just a guidance for a deadline, I think it would be helpful to provide guidance, even if it's not a fast rule for people, so that they understand times of the essence, especially when spring rolls around. Because this spring, there's not much time to get much done, especially if you have a lot to do, so. Thank you. I think that's all I have.
Michael, did you have any questions for staff at this point?
No, I think I'm going to wait. I know we're going to see this again next week, so I may have questions later, but for now, I'm good.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open this up to the public and invite any member of the audience that would like to come forward and speak to the council on the presentation that you've just seen. I would ask you to limit your comments to approximately three minutes. There's a war going on, this two's going to go first.
Karen and Sue.
Good evening.
Hello. My name's Gary.
If you could pull that, there we go. Thank you.
My name's Gary Sylvie. I'm a resident here of Placerville, and I don't have any questions. I have some statements, starting off with, you guys were here for roundabout days, right? This will change the landscape of the area town that I live. There's more clarification that needs to be in here. The distance between trees and the height of trees, the distance between shrubs and the height of shrubs, well, what about the combination of trees and shrubs, which is going to be in everybody's case? Where I live, there's a lot of old houses with a lot of really old precious landscaping. 20-foot-high camellias are common. You're going to be telling people to cut those down, basically. The other question I have is along property lines where PG&E has been failing to maintain clearance. Is it going to be up to the owner, homeowners now, to pick up the fee for what PG&E should have been doing all along? And then, finally, is there going to be any consideration for people in the town here, and this includes many of my neighbors, that will not be able to afford this? They barely can afford their property taxes, increases in water rates, et cetera, and now we're going to be telling them to pay literally thousands of dollars for this. That's, those aren't questions, those are just statements and things to think about.
Thank you for your comments. And again, this is a draft process. We are far from adopting a resolution, and we are far from finished reviewing this. Inviting any member of the body to speak to the council on this item.
Okay, the presentation's pretty good, and I think this ordinance is very much improved. However, I went into the weeds and read the actual ordinance in the, in the staff report, and these are my comments. And they're all about the definitions that you have in section 716-4. The ordinance needs to define its terms before using them subsequently. Definitions also need to be in a logical sequence. Fuel is a term used throughout the definitions list, so it needs to be defined at the beginning of this section rather than left to the end. I suggest moving R and Q, which divide fuel and ladder fuels, up to before E, when you talk about fuel modification areas. Also, fuel should not just refer to wildland vegetation. The definition needs to read, "Fuel means any combustible material, including petroleum-based products and vegetation, either ornamental or wildland vegetation." Also, the responsible officials for ordinance enforcement get lost by being buried in this list of definitions. They need to be either at the very beginning as the first two items in the definition list, which I think would be the best, or at the very end to wrap up the definitions list. And, again, it's much improved. And I would say, in answer to Councilmember Borelli's two beautiful trees that, yes, touch, I would treat, if I were doing the review of your property, I would treat those as a single entity.
Thank you.
And if there's clearance around those so that other trees don't also touch them, so you don't end up with, well, I've got five trees, and they all make this big group that are all touching, you know, two trees touching and enough clearance around them, I don't think is a problem.
Thank you for your comments. Sue.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Acuna, Marion Washburn, Placerville resident. My head is full of thoughts concerning this ordinance. It's such an all-encompassing ordinance, but I'll try to make my comments relatively brief, knowing that there's going to be a lot more information and explanation on Tuesday. But, first of all, let me acknowledge and thank you for the time and effort you've put into this, because I know it's a huge job, and there's probably an enormous amount of jeopardy in terms of public sentiment, because it's going to be perceived, I'm sure by many, as government hammering people that spend money that they don't have. So, it's going to be a tough one, I think, to get the story out, why provisions of this ordinance are really necessary for our own survival. Survival as a town as well as our lives in the end of the process. So, it's a brave thing you're doing, and I wish you well, and I think it'll take a fair amount of analysis to get those details right so that people can buy into what can ultimately save all of our lives. Let me just cite a couple of minor things, or maybe not so minor, about the ordinance. One, when it comes to working with the public, it seems like, as a member of the public, I am always resentful if government asks me to do something that they're not willing to do themselves. So, part of this, I would think, would be a very strong showing of what the city is willing to do to make others safe themselves. And what comes to mind is, as a member of the Fire Safe Council Board, we've been serving the city informally, but just to find out, see if we could find out where the areas of greatest risk are. But I've noticed areas that I've probably never noticed before in new ways, that trees arch over streets, and they probably have their origin in the City of Placerville right away, and I think that would take a great deal of financial commitment to deal with that. But yet, it seems enormously important if people had to, in fact, evacuate, as well as it would be a show of confidence that the city's doing the right thing at their expense as well. Another thing that comes to mind is, I went to the Board of Supervisors meeting today that they were talking about the same ordinance county-wise, and it was mentioned by Supervisor Veerkamp that apparently BLM is relinquishing or have a lot of money and funding that they hadn't before to be more aggressive and assertive as far as vegetation management. And since the whole northern boundary of Placerville really does abut to BLM land, lots and lots of people have BLM land that's unmanaged vegetation-wise behind them, but the individual resident, I don't think is really prepared to go in and deal with them on a house-by-house basis. So, it strikes me that something the city could do that's really meaningful would be, as a city, to work with BLM to clear and, not clear, but manage those forest lands that are close to all those residences up on the ridge tops on the northern side. So, that does come to mind. Another one is a little ironic. As I recall, in our codes, that we require, we, being the city, requires a tree replacement formula when grading is done. So, as I'm thinking about this ordinance, it seems possible that we could be, on the one hand, requiring people to put in more trees than are legally permissible under the vegetation ordinance. So, if that is, in fact, the case, if that tree replacement formula could be looked at and made compliant with whatever ordinance that, or a standard that you come up with, so that those two are congruent instead of contradictory. So, as I said, I've got lots of thoughts, but I'll save the rest of them for Tuesday. Thank you very much for all the work that you do, and as far as you've gotten on this, and also, thank you for including the Fire Safe Council in your conversations.
Thank you, Marion. We appreciate your efforts at the Fire Safe Council, so thank you to you. Again, Kirk Smith approaching the podium.
Good evening, Mayor. These are some of the concerns I have. First of all, I want to commend you. You keep putting a tremendous amount of time and thought into this project of great importance. The Board of Supervisors, I believe, is working on the ordinance at this time, although they passed it. The state has one. The state has one. The suggestion is that, to the extent possible, you work on having them be as much like each other as possible. We just don't need a whole bunch of laws that require somebody to keep hiring law firms to sort them all out. So to the extent that you can, use one if possible. The chief of CAL FIRE for this division told me recently that they still are available to come to homes, as they were for us years ago, and provide an inspection. So when I take them up on that shortly, and they come in and say, well, these structures are fine, I want you to do this or that, how do I know that afterwards, after I do exactly what they require and suggest is necessary in their professional judgment, how do I know I'm not going to be required to come back later and do a whole bunch of other things that are in contravention of what they recommended? So there should be some way to help satisfy that. For example, as Mr. Thomas mentioned about insurance, I do whatever the insurance company recommends, because I want to keep my insurance rates low and keep the policies. The other thing to point out is, as Councilmember Taylor wisely pointed out several meetings ago, one of your biggest problems is large amounts of undeveloped property. And I'm just using the example I raised earlier, because it's so visible, just by way of illustration. You could use the property right behind me on that hill. Fires generally go uphill. But if you have 50, 100, 200 acres that are undeveloped, as I read it, all you have to do to get off the hook is have a 35-wide barrier fire break around it. But as we know, that means nothing, because we had the Paradise Fire, the Napa Fire, where they're able to jump four-lane highways, and you've got those tall trees like those behind me. If one of them burns and falls over, that easily goes way past 35 acres. I know it's expensive. I would be screaming about that cost if I had to face it now, but I don't. So that's what you need to address, because that's where the hazards are. And as far as all these enforcement things in there, you really don't need them, because I can't, no matter how imaginative I'd like to think I am, think of any grounds that anybody has to appeal anything, because you have tremendous discretion with whoever does this enforcement. You ought to take out, I hope you took out the attorney's provision, that's kind of silly. But lastly, why do you have this business about coming onto property except if it's an occupied dwelling or a reasonable expectation of privacy? That's very offensive. Our property's been robbed several times. There are nine houses in that immediate area, all of them, repeat, all of them without exception, have been robbed. And it's not just in the homes. There's a felony warrant out for one of them just recently in February. But all, nine of them, one has been robbed six times, and it's sheds and garages, and three of the city's finest came out there last week when an alarm went off, and we found a car parked on it. Turned out to not be a problem. But you guys don't even say anything about coming in beyond reasonable hours. You're saying not even nine to five. CAL FIRE came on our property twice for a big fire on Big Cut, and they asked permission before they landed a helicopter. They put on a transmitter to, for relay between the King Fire and the Fairgrounds. They asked permission. They didn't need to. We told them they didn't need to. And then you're going to come out without asking permission? That's just very troublesome. So even though you don't have a uniform, you're still to serve and protect. And that doesn't, that seems very troublesome. You haven't shown any reason for it. Thank you so much.
You stopped at five seconds.
Yeah, I got five minutes left. Couldn't be.
Five seconds.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there another member of the public wishes to address the council on this item? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public comment at this time, bring it back to the council for discussion and direction of staff. Once again, I would like to repeat that this is a draft, and we are, I think the council is of a mind that we are going to take the time necessary to try and do our very best to get this correct. And I appreciate all the comments by the members in the audience this evening. I think they're all well-taken and informative and useful in allowing us. City Attorney was scribbling madly down there, because there are a lot of, this is not a, far from a finished product. Is there any other comments? I'd like to make a couple of comments.
I think I'll just have one, and it's just kind of food for thought as we move forward to Tuesday. City Manager, could we go back to the, this slide real fast?
The, the, the house?
Yeah, I just.
You have to pay Dave Warren $5 to operate the projector. There we go. Thank you, Dave.
So I think just as we all look at this and contemplate this ordinance, is, I'd like everyone to think, how many houses in Placerville fit that description there?
Not mine.
I mean, it certainly isn't to fit mine, and as I look around the town, there's very few. And so, you know, when, when you look at the ordinance, you know, if you're in Natomas, if you're in Irvine, you know, if you're in an area with subdivisions and it's well, I mean, there's a couple of spots in Placerville, but we're in the foothills. Foothills have trees. And so I just want everyone to think about that as we move forward here, because the practical side of this is what we also have to look at as we move forward. And yeah, we were sitting with City Manager today, and if you look up at the hill on either side of us, you literally would have to clear-cut 50% of the trees on there in order to live within the ordinance. So we have to really think through how we're going to do this, and what's smart and what's feasible, and what's in the best interest of the city and the aesthetics of it as well. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that as we move forward and as we collect our thoughts and go through this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I agree with that, too, but I, and I, I still, in my mind, I'm thinking, if we all do what we're supposed to do, we're going to save our town. It's, and it's maybe not by cutting down every tree in sight, you know, just reasonable things, because like you say, we're different, and we can't adhere to some of the stringent, you know. So I think we'll be fine, as long as everybody cooperates and does their due diligence.
Agreed. Karen, did you have any other comments at this time?
You know, I do have a comment. I was really hoping that this ordinance would be ready, like, I don't know, January, but...
2020?
At least in time to enforce this year. But, you know, just because the ordinance, I think it is good that we're taking our time and being thorough, but just because the ordinance isn't out now doesn't mean that we, as homeowners, should wait to be doing our clearing and, you know, mowing our grass and doing what we can, because we know what's coming, and now is the time to do it, so, for this season.
Thank you. And let me jump right, add on to that comment. Discussion that I've had several times in the last few weeks with Cleve is, as we work our way through this ordinance and getting this one right, we have every obligation to do, just as Karen just suggested, we have existing regulations, we have an existing fire marshal, we have old city weed abatement rules, and we need to, and we've already started this to some degree, but we probably need to commit this evening, as a council and with staff, to do everything we can to identify and mitigate those known hazards. I think every one of us could name a big empty lot, whether it's 100 or 200 or 300 feet long or wide, that has never been cleaned or is cleaned every other third or fourth year. This fire season, with these existing regulations, those things need to be called out. They need to be taken care of. There is a resident in my neighborhood, the last six years, it has required four violation notices by the fire marshal to get that homeowner to clean his regular-sized yard. Four-foot weeds and six-foot-high dead bushes right up next to the house. So he needs to get a reminder letter. There's vacant lots in my neighborhood. Those lots, various real estate transactions, those lots need to be cleaned. I don't want them being a hazard to my neighborhood. There's an empty lot on Cedar Ravine next to the historic... Cemballic House. It has been sporadically cleaned. It needs to be bare dirt this summer. How would you hate to see a chain spark going down Cedar Ravine and set the historic home on fire, because we didn't enforce 100-foot lot to get cleared? The regulations are in place to deal with that for this fire season. So if you know of an area that needs to be cleaned, then please turn it in either to the Eldorado County Fire District or call the City Manager's office. And I don't want to start naming names, because I know some of the owners, and it's expensive, but they need to be responsible. We can no longer allow these things to exist.
Can you make one more comment?
Sure.
If you're done.
No, I'm not anywhere near done, but, okay. One of the things that I think we need to develop out of this is the Placerville standard. I think Zone 1 and Zone 2 are probably a good footprint to start with, but we are never going to get CAL FIRE's dimensions to work in my town, or in my, or in my neighborhood even. So we need what I'm calling the Placerville standard. We need to find out what's going to work for this old historic town that has some newer subdivisions and a lot of old ones. In referencing what Vice Mayor Saragosa and City Manager referred to, we looked out the window at, from City Hall, on the north side of Highway 50 at Coloma Street, looking east towards Bedford Street. Currently, the grass grows from the Caltrans right away, up that slope, and then engulfs a huge grove of live oak trees, then turns into a fairly substantial group of ponderosa pines that are all over 100 feet tall. Our scenario this morning was a car backfires or catalytic converter starts the grass on fire, it ladders right up that hillside, jumps into live oak trees, and sets that whole ridge on fire. We have narrow streets, a lot of congestion, and it's going to take county, it's going to take any good fire district, five minutes before they're going to be operational at the scene of that fire. At the top of that hill, you have one of the oldest and most historic churches in this community. It's on the National Register. It's right there at the top of that hill, right beyond it, and in the next, you're in a historic neighborhood with Coloma Street. All the historic homes now are threatened. You're into one of our older neighborhoods from the 1920s and the 1930s, up in Cottage and up in there. And that was just if Caltrans doesn't cut their weeds. So we had asked Cleve to actually see if we could get an aerial photo, so we could see, how do we apply the CAL FIRE standard to that hillside? Do we want to? Or where do we find this, what I call the Placerville standard, or the dimensions that will work our town? So this isn't, you know, really, this is going to be an evolving process. Marion Washburn has worked tirelessly in her neighborhood to deal with some private property issues that turned out to be city issues. For example, you mentioned that the city needs to be a good property owner, and I absolutely agree. Duffy Park, right now, the hillside that sits along Clay Street that isn't developed is nothing but weeds and blackberry vines. Again, right along a paved road, if that went off on a north wind day, it would be right into Benson Court, Nazalia Court, and what have you. The city needs, we need to find a way to mitigate that hazard. Same situation involves out at Lyons Park. We need to make sure that we're being a good neighbor wherever we go. Cleve had an absolute brainstorm this afternoon when he was meeting, or this morning, and it was to use some of the 60-some acres at Goldbug Park as a demonstration clearing project. It would be readily available to anybody to drive into the park and look at it. We would invite CAL FIRE to come in and pick a location in the park that's easily accessible, and see if we could get them to go up and do a swath, if you will, meeting their various standards. So we would actually get part of the park cleaned up, and we would actually have a very available demonstrations plot with before and afters. So, you know, there's a lot of things that we're going to work on. I know one of the issues I have, too, is with this dimension, my wood, my wood storage will be in my neighbor's yard, because I can't put it within 30 feet, and I only think I have 26 feet. So I'll have to talk to him. And my live oak trees grow in clumps of fives and sixes and sevens. Yeah, we're not going to create a moonscape. So with that, I look forward to seeing everybody on this item on Tuesday. At what time, Cleve?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. All right. And here at City Hall, we're going to have this presentation with any modifications to it? You going to make some changes?
Yeah, there will be some modifications I've learned tonight and some things I can do differently, but primarily, this will be it. So, and again, stressing that this is, this is, I like to think that's more of a starting point. And we can, we can work on it together with the public to come up with something that hopefully works for Placerville.
All right. Well, thank you for allowing me to expand on my points.
So I agree with you about a Placerville plan.
Yes.
But if we, in my mind, even if we change some of the things, this, if we pass this ordinance, it's not going to work, it's, because it's more stringent.
No, it's not.
Than a Placerville plan. So we would have to work the whole thing.
We've got to develop what that's going to be.
Exactly.
Yeah, oh, we're far from done.
Exactly.
And, you know, Cleve, you were talking about not being safe during the hot season to be doing the clearing. But it's very safe for us to be working on this ordinance in this room with the public to get this right during the hot season. And again, we need, you know, our existing ordinances will deal with this fire season. You know, and as said, Marion, we worked really hard, and we were really proud of the residential tree ordinance. And it was a huge issue in this town in 80s and 90s, and there was great contention about what we were doing, and we were going to, well, anyway. It, eventually, the community rallied together, and we took great pride in having that developed. And, you know, it is, it is beyond sad when you think about what has changed that now creates, that ordinance is now a hazard. That is really sad, that whatever has happened, that tree ordinance that we were once so proud to have is now a real liability, or potential liability. Now, that's a sad note to end on, but we will move on, because we have a couple more things we need to work on.
I want to throw one more thing in, because this is something that I've talked about years ago, and it's, I'm still banging the same drum. I think one of the biggest hazards in Placerville are our little streets, one-lane streets, and the trees that overhang. And I'm going to use my street, Tunnel Street. PG&E came in and they did a lot of clearing, but I'm going to tell you, if there was a fire, that whole thing would just go. And oak trees, because they're all old oak trees, and then they go into pine trees and et cetera, they go over the hill to Bedford, you know, and that whole area. So I still think that is one of our biggest problems, are the trees that we've got growing on our little one-lane roads. And that, those are the, that's evacuation. So here I go again on my, banging my drum about evacuation, so.
Thank you very much. Cleve, you were, I think we gave, Karen, did you have one last comment?
Well, I just, you kind of touched on it a little bit, but I, I agree with Ms. Washburn's comment that, you know, if we're going to be asking citizens and residents to be taking these steps, which will be difficult and expensive for them, that the city needs to set a good example by following the ordinance on their own city-owned property. And I know that will be challenging, and we have a budget workshop coming up, but I think it's something that we need to be considering, especially with our big parks.
Thank you, Karen. All right. Moving on to item 12.2, we're being asked to adopt a resolution approving amendment number one in the amount of zero. This is the kind of amendment that I like. And the issuance of notice to proceed number two with Drake Haglan and Associates for, and this is a very important project, the Placerville Drive Bridge Widening. City Engineer Neves, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Acuna, Vice Mayor Saragosa, and council members. The proposed item before you is to approve a no-cost amendment number one to the existing consulting services agreement with Drake Haglan and Associates as part of the project approval and environmental documentation phase for the Placerville Drive Bridge project and the Placerville Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Improvement Project. In 2016, the city applied for and successfully received congestion mitigation air quality federal funds for the projects, or for the bicycle and pedestrian project. The purpose of this project is to improve the multimodal connectivity on Placerville Drive between Armory and the US Highway 50 undercrossing. Construction of a new sidewalk on Green Valley Road is also planned as part of the project. The city's Placerville Drive Bridge project is also located within the same project limits and was initially accepted into the Federal Highway Bridge Program in 1997. In 2012, HBP recommended an approved replacement of the existing bridge as the best approach to addressing the existing bridge's deficiencies. So although the project is named the Placerville Drive Bridge Widening Project, it's actually been approved for replacement. On July 10th of 2018, council awarded a design services agreement with Drake Haglan in accordance with the federal funding guidelines. The proposed amendment before you and notice to proceed number two allows for the shifting of tasks included in their already-approved funded amounts from design into the PA and ED, or Project Approval and Environmental Documentation Phase, for preliminary right-of-way engineering and utility coordination work to support the environmental documentation process. As a reminder to council and the public, there will be a public meeting for these projects held at the county fairgrounds in the organ room on May 8th at 6:00 PM. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you this evening, and I'm Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. I appreciate the report. Does council have any questions for staff? Hearing no one, I will go ahead and open the public comment on this item. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council on Item 12.2?
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville, and I drive over that horrible bridge on a regular basis, not always daily, but often enough to say, "Hooray! After the Blair's Lane Bridge, this is the worst bridge in all of Placerville." So I am really happy to see this one moving forward.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Sue. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council on this item? Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'll go ahead and close the public comment on this item and bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Any other questions on this item? Would someone like to make a motion?
Aye, so move. We adopt this resolution.
I'll second.
All right. Been moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. City Engineer Neves, could I just ask approximately what year construction?
Right now, the federal funds are programmed out in 2022. That's what we have for the bridge replacement project. As far as construction funding for the bicycle and pedestrian facilities project, it is currently unfunded. The intent is to prepare the project to be ready to list or shovel-ready and then apply for a larger funding source such as the Active Transportation Program.
Okay, so we can focus on 2022?
Provided we don't get pushed out by the Highway Bridge Program.
Okay. Well, thank you.
What was the time?
2022.
No, the meeting at the organ room.
Oh, excuse, yeah, why don't you mention that again, please?
Yes, sure.
The public outreach on this.
Yes, the, the public meeting is scheduled for May 8th at 6:00 PM in the organ room at the fairgrounds.
Thank you. May 8th in the organ room at the fairgrounds.
Yeah, and there's been some flyers mailed out to the project vicinity, and then we'll be doing some outreach on our Facebook page as well.
All right, very good. Now hopefully we'll get a good turnout for that. Small steps, but we're making them forward. All right, moving on to Item 12.3, adopt a resolution amending the Measure H and L Sales Tax Committee. Mr. Warren, I believe you have the staff report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, tonight we are recommending certain changes to the Measure H L Sales Tax Committee membership policy tonight. At your meeting held on February 14th, 2017, the council adopted Resolution Number 8494, which established the Measure H L Sales Tax Committee and its associated policies. For example, the resolution identified the committee membership being comprised of three city residents with no more than one of the three being a renter and two commercial property or business owners within the city. The resolution also identified an alternate committee member as being a resident of the city. The current committee membership is shown on chart, the chart on Page 2 of the report. As you will see, one of the commercial property business owner seats is vacant. Tony Granados, who is a founding member of the original Measure H Sales Tax Committee and a commercial property owner, tendered his resignation on May 17th, 2018 due to demands of his job, which was almost a year ago. Over this past year, staff has solicited local business groups, including the Placerville Downtown Association, in filling the vacant committee seat. The seat was also advertised in the Mountain Democrat newspaper without any response. In the meantime, current committee member Gary Sylvie, who's in the audience tonight, a resident and homeowner, has faithfully served as an active member on the committee to kind of fill the void. Due to the lack of public interest in the vacant commercial property business owner seat, staff is recommending certain changes to the committee membership policy. Staff recommends that the city, or excuse me, committee membership be changed to include members who are either residents with no more than one being a renter, they can be a business owner or a commercial property owner within the city, as long as they meet one of those three things. In other words, the applicant who is either resident, commercial property owner, or business owner could be considered for any of the five committee seats under this proposal. Similarly, staff is also recommending that the alternate committee member seat be made optional as either a resident, business owner, or commercial property owner within the city. And we're recommending that Gary Sylvie be appointed as a regular committee member. We also tonight have our chair, Sue Rodman, in the audience, and these changes will provide additional flexibility in filling vacant seats on the committee in the future. Another option you may consider would be changing the committee membership to four members and one alternate member who are residents and no more than one being a renter, and one member is either a business owner or a commercial property owner. Or the city council could simply keep the committee as it is and direct staff to continue looking for another business owner, property owner. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Counsel, we have some.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Mr. Warren?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. I think it's so unfortunate that we don't have a property, a business owner to, you know, why it's been so hard to fill that seat. Recently, I've had a commercial owner, I've had a couple of complaints, and it's mostly centered around the sewer charge and how much their bills have increased, and I just, they're a big part of this because they're paying a huge share, you know, of how we, and I just think it's unfortunate, and I, I know you've advertised and everything, but I just wonder if there's another, another way there, or take a little bit more time to try to find someone to fill that seat. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we could continue down that path. I think for, you know, the primary business that the committee attends to is dealing with the budget right now. So you have about $3 million that they're working with for CIP projects and paying down debt service.
So it really doesn't deal with the rates?
Not really. I mean, we've just went through a five-year rate study.
Right.
And this is just year one so far.
I just think that, what I, what I've observed is, and I think Sue would agree with me, that when folks are on these committees, they become very aware of, you know, our budget and, you know, money and what we've got coming in and going out, and, and I, they, a little bit more understanding, you know. I wish everybody could serve on some of these committees so that they could see where we're coming from.
Sure, sure. Any other questions for Dave? Thank you, Patty. Cleve, any comment?
Just one comment. Working with the city attorney, and as I discussed this today with mayor, vice mayor, we think there's a clarification, and I apologize, Dave, I didn't get a chance to talk to you about this, but on the, in the actual resolution under Item Number 2, membership, there needs to be some clarification, I think, that can be rewritten, and the city attorney, I think, has some language we'd like to change that through, for you to consider. It doesn't change what our intent is here, but it reads clearer in terms of what, what that actual item is, so.
And would our city attorney be prepared to share that with the council this evening?
Yes, I am.
Very good, sir. If you would, go ahead, Mr. Dresch. This is an area that Dave and I even talked about, and I thought I had it straightened out, but reading it again, I think Cleve's absolutely right. So it would start with Paragraph 2, membership, and starting with the second sentence, it reads, now it reads, "The five members shall be composed as follows, colon, either citizens who are residents of the city, and no more than one shall be a renter, comma, commercial property, or business owner within the city." I would suggest, just for clarification, we rephrase it to say, "The five members shall be composed as follows, colon, either citizens who are residents of the city, only one of which may be a renter and not a property owner, semicolon, commercial, or commercial property owner or business owner within the city." All right. If you could repeat it one more time, John, just, just your suggested revision? "The five members shall be composed as follows, colon, either citizens who are residents of the city, only one of which may be a renter and not a property owner, semicolon, or commercial property or business owner within the city." All right. Do we have that? All right, very good. This clears mud?
Yeah, that, I mean, that, that works for me. That clears up some ambiguity in there.
Dennis, did you have a comment on that revision?
Nope.
All right, Mr. Warren? Any comment on what is being proposed?
I think that's a good recommendation. I think it clarifies the membership, that clearly they have to be city residents.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, certainly. And the city manager suggested this, that after commercial property, we put the word owner, so it reads commercial property owner or business owner. I think it kind of infers that, but this really makes it even clearer. Just to be clear. All right. All right. I appreciate this clarification this evening, that we can continue to consider this item. If there aren't any questions right now, I'm going to go ahead and open public comment on this item, and then 12.3, the revision to the makeup of the membership on the H and L Committee. Good evening again, Sue.
Yes, Sue Rodman, your committee chair for H and L Committee, and this is a proposal that we proposed for Dave Warren to bring forward to the city council, because after searching and going out in our feelers to find, to try to find a business owner who would be willing to be on the committee, we figured, okay, we've tried this for over a year now. We, I think we may as well face reality that the business owners really were not going to join us. They're too busy running the businesses that they have, and as, as it was said, most of the work that we do is working with our engineers and with Dave to look at what's coming in and what needs to go out, and what do we think the priorities need to be, and make recommendations then to be brought forward to the city council. And I think that this would allow us to use the membership as we actually have it. We haven't had a second business owner or a commercial property owner there for over a year. We haven't been able to scare anybody up out of the woods, and Gary Sylvie has been there at all the meetings. I think he may have missed one in the last two years, and seems to me like, let's, let's just face reality and put the committee to where it needs to be. We looked at the actual ordinance, and it just says five members. It does not designate how that membership should be split. The city council did that, so I think the city council, I think, can correct it to work with reality.
Appreciate your comments, and of course, we all appreciate all the hard work you do on the committee. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council on Item 12.3?
Hello, I'm Gary Sylvie. I guess I wouldn't, couldn't be honest to say I'm, I'm objective about this. I could objectively say the committee spent quite a bit of time considering this and looking for another member. As an alternate, I've, I've enjoyed thoroughly being on the committee, learning a lot about the engineering and city operations, finance, and would certainly consider it a privilege to become a full-fledged member as part of this, this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. And we appreciate your, your enthusiastic participation as the alternate. It is very rare, and so we really, we really do appreciate you being ready to go in the situation that's at hand here. All right, is there any other member of the public wishing to comment on this? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Are there any other clarifications or questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll move with the, with the, with the, well, it's not even amendment, with the addition of the, of the verbiage from our esteemed attorney over here.
I'll second. All right, it's been moved in second and to approve this changes, including the wording that is presented this evening by the city attorney. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to Item 13, council reports from other agency meetings, El Dorado Transit. We haven't met recently.
Next week.
Next week. Hopefully, we'll be able to announce the name of our new executive director soon. Moving on to El Dorado County Transportation Commission. Patty?
We haven't met either, but I did get a, I know we all, you did too, an email from Woody talking about the public meeting in Tahoe, and I didn't write it down. I was going to. I don't know that anyone here would be interested, but I, I wrote him back and said to be, I hope that we would share this with the, it's about, there, there's going to be several projects ongoing on, in the Tahoe area, and one of them is going to be Highway 50 being closed at the summit. And if you remember before, when this happened, there was quite a lot of dialogue. Business operators were a little concerned about, you know, the road being closed and losing business. Anyway, the Chamber of Commerce got very involved to the point of posting signs in different, you know, down the, kind of like we're doing with...
Road signs?
No, no, advising people to, to, you know, so that the businesses wouldn't lose. So he said that he, they were doing that. So that, that's the only thing that I had to offer.
Thank you, Patty. LaFco, we meet tomorrow night. Jose left. Yes, he did. Good. Seco, Vice Mayor Saragosa?
We did have a meeting. It's kind of been a continuation on the MTP plan. I did bring up, and I know we talked about this a little bit last time we met, in terms of if we do eventually go to a mileage tax about how that affects rural areas. And so I know staff has been in discussions with Woody. They have some ideas about how we may be able to mitigate some of those for rural areas. Of course, it's just going to end up being a statewide plan, but to the extent that we can be on the forefront and bring some good options forward for that, it'll be helpful for our areas and others like us. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Two by two. I don't think we have anything to report this evening on that. We probably need to get one scheduled so we can continue our dialogue with the county. Thank you, Cleve. Item 14, requests for future agenda items. Are there any, if council requests for a future agenda item? All right, moving on to city manager and staff reports. Cleve, do you have any additional information for us this evening?
Nothing further tonight.
Nothing from our department heads this evening? Good evening, chief. Chief is out there working diligently. All right, upcoming items. We have a number of them, tentatively scheduled for a meeting on May 14th. I'm not going to go through all of them there this evening. Looks like Ray Lawery Drive paving is a good thing, so we look forward to seeing that. I probably get one or two emails a week about Ray Lawery Drive. It's a happening road. All right, well, then I will go ahead and adjourn us. It says here May 14th, but perhaps we should adjourn to April 30th, which is our...
We did not, we did not plan to notice that as a public meeting, but if you would like us to, we can.
What's the issue to the council? What do your, what are your thoughts? Logistically, does it matter?
I mean, it, it, it me, if we're going to do that, then we will do an agenda for it and et cetera. We did not intend to do that. We would just run it more, it would be more informal. I would run it with the mayor. We, I know you want to make some comments, so together we would put that together and do the presentation, but the council wouldn't sit up in front. You can, you're, you're welcome to sit in the audience and listen and et cetera, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be on May 14th, 5:30 closed session. Thank you very much, and good night.